Welcome, everybody to. Welcome, everybody out to our pre-meeting for February 8th, regular meeting beginning at 5:00. On that note, usually pre-meetings, we just kind of go through the items that are on the agenda and get a little bit of an understanding as to what there is to them. And so start right there and I'll turn it over to Acting Director York.
Thank you, Chairman. First off, I wanted to extend a welcome to our newest planning commission member, Kami Jo. Welcome. Good to see a friendly face and a little bit more diversity on the board. It's nice to see.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you.
And we also have Courtland Erickson sitting in for Liam Keeler. So in case you haven't met Courtland, he assists with the Ogden Valley Planning Commission most often.
Oh, and he's well versed.
Well versed. I do have to tell you, though, since we completed the Ogden Valley General Plan in 2016, their meetings have been retained. And I think it's just because the collective vision kind of came together and after that, people knew where we were going. So hopefully, we get the same opportunity here the next couple of months. Okay, so we have four items on the agenda. Three of them are legislative, or excuse me, administrative, one of them legislative. And the first administrative item is on consent agenda. You guys have the opportunity to pull it from consent agenda if you want to review it with public comment. Your choice. We figured it was a fairly simple application, so it was consent. And if you're comfortable with it in your meeting, you just move to approve consent and that would be good enough. Any desire to go into a little, any more detail on that project?
No, I don't think so. Commissioner? I think it's pretty straightforward. Is there any, is there anybody that would want to move this off the consent agenda? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so the other two administrative items are on the non-consent on the normal agenda. One is for a conditional use permit for a PRUD consisting of 23 townhomes and 15 storage units. And the second is to amend the open space preservation plan for Riverbend Cluster Subdivision. Both of those will be presented by Felix. Felix, would you like to get up and kind of give an intro to the projects?
We're just in more session.
Sorry, Felix, go ahead.
No, you're just fine. Just a quick correction. So the, the first item, Lilac Estates. And that one's actually, they're looking for approval, like subdivision approval. They already have the condition. But yeah, so what they're, what they're, the stage at approval, they are, they've, they've basically gone through the, the gone through the course of submitting these civil drawings and the getting landscape plan, cost estimates, basically just getting those final last few things buttoned up and ready. So planning staff, after looking over what they had, submitted, they feel this is definitely ready for planning commission final approval. There's, I'm trying to think if there's any, I haven't really had any, I haven't had any type of public comment on that one. If you have the answering questions.
Do you want to talk about what West Haven sent over to us?
That's true. Yes. Okay. And so West Haven City sent us a letter of objection. In that letter, what, what they're, we gave them the opportunity just to speak, just to speak to the, to that development. Their objection relates to, it doesn't really fit with the cities. I guess you call it community feel or community design.
A half a mile up the road, it does.
Yeah. And so that's
That's not subjective at all.
Yeah. But so, so what we did is we, the reason why we gave West Haven City the opportunity to kind of give their two cents and say their piece is because it's just required by state code. Being that it's, it's close to the, the boundary, it just happens to lie within West Haven City annexation plan area. So that's, that's part of why we did that. But so we had a chance to meet with the county commission yesterday and just talk to them. What their plan is, what they'd like to see planning do with this project. And it was just that, you know, let's keep moving it forward with a few for approval. And if this happens in the future, near future, far future, that West Haven City is able to annex that property, then
If West Haven had a problem with that, they should have annexed or worked with, wanted to annex that.
It's just funny that it doesn't fit their plan, but everywhere else you see that. That developer built that park. I mean, and that's, you know, when I look at this, we've got a road that's already improved. You know, you got a wide road in front of it. You got a school that's close to it. And you got that park. What more do you, I mean, that's set up for.
Anything else on that? Great. Go to the next item.
So the next item, Riverbend Cluster Subdivision. So last year, they came through and they got approval for their basing plan. This is a cluster type development, pretty large subdivision, like 100 lots. And it's a, what they're doing is they're proposing some residential development with some associated open space. And that's a requirement with the cluster development. What they, what they have approval for at this point is for the open space plan to utilize a point of diversion from the Leaver River to provide irrigation water for this development of lots and also and they're looking tonight to get approval from the planning commission for kind of like a second option. In case that first option doesn't work out. There's a lot of complexities that go into that first option. So I think it's wise that they come here tonight asking for approval for this second option to be ready in case they need it. And what the section up, the second option entails is basically having, working with upper irrigation district and creating a irrigation pond, pond that would occupy a portion of the open space parcel. The first time they came around, we saw that, you know, it doesn't really fit well with the open space intentions, or it doesn't really, the code really doesn't support an irrigation pond within the open space. But after looking it over and taking into consideration the public benefit that's going to result from that irrigation pond at this location, we'd be able to serve this, the greater area in this, in this local vicinity with those irrigation water needs. So upper irrigation was also looking for opportunities to expand. And that's where the developer and upper irrigation kind of came together and come with this new open space plan. I'll, I'll go into more detail slideshow.
Any questions on either of those?
I can, I'll wait till we have a, see what he presents. Maybe I won't have to talk about it twice.
Great. Mention just as a side note, tacked onto one of the recent text amendments that the county commission approved, they added in that an open space parcel could be used for water, secondary culinary water storage. And so they did, we thought that it might be allowed by the code, the way it is. It's just kind of a flexible interpretation of the code. We just got in the ordinance and actually made it clear that we can allow that. There's no other questions for Felix. Our fourth item is a legislative item. Legislative items give you guys broad discretion to approve or deny. If you choose to deny, you have to do so based off of a reasonable public interest. If you choose to approve, you do so based on the same findings. And it is a request for a recommendation to rezone property from the A1 zone to the R110 zone in an unincorporated island in Plain City. Does anyone have any questions on that one?
Where do you want me to start?
Fire away.
The, the first one, why don't you get us all kind of in tune with where this is with the, the rezone that we did in the same area?
Sure.
That way, everybody has a better idea location and how it lays in with that other JDC.
Definitely. I'm going to do some toggling here on the screen. I'm going to zoom out just a little bit. This is the Lever County GIS map that we have our zoning map. And you can see the, the pink is Plain City. And then you've got this little island here. If you remember back in, it would have been last year, and I think even a little bit, the, in 2020, the, this rezone for the, what we call JDC Ranch came, came before you. It was Nilson Homes Development. So you've got, like, I'll, I'll click on a few of these properties, but actually, maybe what I'll do is I'll show you the, the staff report from that approval. This project, if you can see where my mouse is, this, this project that we're looking at tonight is directly north. And it's a similar density. So you can see, and, and there may be some changes to, to JDCs depending on how they move forward. Just that project hasn't been moving forward as fast as we expected it to. But they have a recommendation from the planning commission to have JDC does to have some R112s, 12,000 square foot lots. And then, like I said, just north of this project is, is this proposal. It's kind of a, a concept, kind of what that will look like. I believe it'll be 58 lots in, in the county and then five lots in Plain City that they'll do.
Can I start? Why don't you go a little bit, Stephen, talk about the trail that we discussed the other day and one of the, maybe you can.
Yep. We, when we met originally with this property owner, we made it clear that we'd like this development to look very similar to the JDC development when it comes through. We want the trails and amenities to, to match up, I guess, not necessarily match up, but to be similar enough that it appears that you're in the same area, that you're in the same neighborhood. So we've done a little bit of back and forth with, with this developer and we've, we've requested that, that a few options. One, our first request would be to actually tie into the JDC. They, they've actually got a trail corridor about 20 feet wide. It's got a 10-foot paved trail with trees. If, if it were to line up exactly with JDC, it would, if you can see where my, my mouse is. And, and for anybody who's showing up, this is a, this is a pre-meeting. And so we haven't gone into the regular meeting yet. So no need to worry. Oh, okay. There is a trail corridor. We'd like them to, to tie into it, a suggestion that, that we as staff were okay with, that the owner had was, well, what if we have some kind of trail that runs along our road and that, that, you know, there will also be trees. There will be a, a tree canopy over that trail as well. And we said, we think that can work as long as you work with JDC to have that tie in so that it, so that, so that you're not just walking on a trail corridor and then have to stop and then walk over somebody else's property to get to this trail. So that's one of our conditions is that they work with JDC to make this connection happen in a, in a, in a good transition.
And now the trail, where does it match up with JDC? So you can just show us that.
So right now it doesn't. So what we're thinking is this project, we're anticipating that it's probably going to move forward a little bit faster than JDC. And so if I were to toggle over here to the JDC property, this is that southwestern corner of this, this property that we're looking at tonight. And the planning recommendation was that this trail corridor continue all the way through the JDC property. So that'll have to be a requirement that happens for the rezone. What will happen is we, we will have to make that condition that this owner tonight works with JDC so that JDC can, can curve this around into, into this part.
Or if they keep it straight, you put it in the back of the lot where, I mean, sometimes a trail in the backyard, you don't want it, as long as you got certain fencing, you know, they'll have to put some I think going to 10 foot Well, I guess it's not really in the front yard. It, it takes away the park strip. A few things that, you know, the rest of the subdivision has with the
We have driveway and cars going in and out, the idea of the trailer.
Exactly. You're dodging, you're dodging people on the trail just to get into your house.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, that was our initial thought as well is let's just carry that all the way through at the back of the lots. But we, we're also okay if they want to figure out a way to curve it. But it's, it's your recommendation. So.
And, and that specifically, would that become part of the subdivision approval process?
It would be, it would be a part of the rezoning. So we'd have a development agreement that would specify that. And then they would, that, that it's nice to have that done at, at the development agreement stage so that there's a clear expectation when they subdivide.
Like how JDC is going to bring it through. I mean, that's a trail corridor that's going to go between those two blocks. You know, and then it would go, granted, I'm, I'm sure the, this will change a little bit to match up with some roads and stuff. I struggle with that. Lots to look at. You know, they're getting, this stayed in Plain City. They, they would get half the amount if they went to Plain City as a lot we're getting. So I think they're getting, we're giving a pretty good concession to up the lots. Some concern, well, at first I had some concern because this would be the R110, which is basically 10,000 square foot lots. JDC is going to bring you, you know, normally you want lots to be bigger, more conforming to the rest and work into the smaller lots in the middle. But the subdivision to the west, right? That's all 10,000 square foot lots.
Correct.
Not as big of a I, I agree. I don't have too much trouble with the, with the lot size because it does conform with other subdivision around it. Depending on what JDC ends up doing, they may take their 12s to some of those 12s to 10s as well. But I, I got to agree, I really don't care. I think that that trail should stay in the back of those lots somehow. That fits better.
Anyway, I have a thought on that. If it were mine, I wouldn't want a trail in the front, a trail in the back. I'd want somewhere that is relatively private. I don't go home with that. These people approached Plain City.
It's my understanding that they have, that they have been in conversation with them. I don't know the full extent. When a subdivision application is submitted, the county will, we will have to notify Plain City. That the state code refers to specifically when subdivision applications are proposed, not necessarily rezones. So there will be a little bit more of a dialogue with Plain City from the county's end. But I don't know the full details of what this owner has discussed in Plain City.
Anything else, commissioners?
I, I have a question on that previous subdivision. So it seemed like when we made our recommendations, the mayor and that they might have continued some dialogue to annex in the previous subdivision. Is there any history on that? Like, do you have any information on that? Is it going to stay county out there then?
We, I'm, I'm not aware of any additional conversations that have happened, but as far as the county goes, we would like that at some point to be annexed into Plain City. That other development you're referring to that Nilson Homes did, there was a condition of a, of rezone approval that the owner enter into an agreement that specifies that none of the future property owners will protest being annexed into the city. So we're planning on that happening. We just don't know exactly when it will happen.
So the other question, all of this additional lots that are, that are coming in, these are all voters of if you're going to annex in or not annex in. So more voters on the out there for an annexation that probably ought to happen.
This is, this will be similar. So we're recommending if this be rezoned, the future owners, that they're, that they will not protest annexation into the city.
It's, it's not a vote situation. They will just automatically be annexed in if, if Plain City approves it.
If it's
If it goes through the process, yeah.
Question, if it's okay, Chair. So the R10 lots on the other, so one side it looks, is the one that you've shown us, that has a mix of the R20 or 15 or 12, a little bit commercial. And then the R10s, are those part of a cluster subdivision? Is that?
Which one? On this subdivision or on?
I showed us before, had a few R10 lots close to the commercial property.
Oh, you're referring to the JDC.
That's on one side. And that's mostly R12. There's a small amount of R10 by the commercial. And
It's actually directly north.
And is that, was that a cluster subdivision that went in? Is that an HOA, the R10s on the other side?
Oh, the other ones, the, the existing.
We can look at it.
I just, I'm concerned about R10 that's not in an HOA. Aesthetically, it's difficult to, the biggest difference to me is that road frontage. You go to 80, you have a dog garage in the front. I don't know if it'll blend into what's on the other side. Usually if you have HOA, you can blend it better. Nervous about that. And they have like extra parks. So my, I would rather see this all if it's not nature way. Is, is this planning to be an HOA?
I don't believe this is.
Okay. And the park would be owned by whatever county or
It's a really good question. The, the owner, I think, can just probably address that during the meeting.
I'd like it, you know.
Absolutely. The decision really is, we got to separate what the subdivision plan is or what it's anticipated to be from what we feel this looks like with everything around, because the subdivision plan will bring on its own characteristics beyond the zoning. And it may be that they even end up wanting to go to an R12 for whatever reason it might be, because the trail gets moved or because it just fits better with JDC or whatever their conclusion becomes. But, you know, the decision tonight is, does our, does our 10 fit in this
In addition to that trail we talked about, we're also asking for that public road to line up. And that may, that, that will involve some communication between this owner and Nilson Homes.
Because the anticipation there is to go from North Plain City Road over to 2600.
Yep.
Straight through, you know, not necessarily straight through, but a, but a thorough fare through there somehow.
Correct.
I think that's it. Thank you. Now, we've got a couple more minutes, commissioners, anything you want to add? We start the meeting? We'll take a breather here for a minute and then we'll start at 5:00. Oh. All right. I think we're, we're ready to start our 5:00 regular meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Looks like we're all in attendance and we have a new member. Welcome to our, our monthly fun and every other month twice. And the next few months, we're going to get to know each other real well. So thanks for your volunteering and let the pain begin. All right. Any comments on the minutes from December's meeting?
Chair, I made a brief overview and didn't notice anything. So make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll go into our consent items. Item two, 2.1 CUP 2022-01, consideration in action on a conditional use permit for construction of a 3 million gallon water reservoir and a pump house for Bonavista Water.
Chair, as much as I'd like to have Blake come up and give us a spill on this, I'll save him the pain tonight and I'll make emotionally approve the consent items.
I have a motion for approval of consent item. Second, is this a roll call? No? All in favor of approval of consent item CUP 2022-01? I, I?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Petitions, applications and public hearings. Item number three on our agenda, administrative items, 3.1 LVL 091521, request for final subdivision approval of Lilac Estates, PRUD consisting of 23 townhouse units and 15 storage units and an existing single family dwelling.
Felix. Yes. Thank you. And a warm welcome to our new commission member. I promise it's not that painful. You might have to work to stay awake some of these meetings.
And, and one other thing, staff does a great job of, of keeping us where we need to be on point. Formation too, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, great. So here we have before you a request for final subdivision approval for Lilac Estates of planned residential unit development. You can see this aerial map kind of gives you a rough location, 2,900 south and 3,500 west. Right adjacent to West Haven City. We did have a brief discussion prior to this meeting. Maybe I'll just cover some of the basics that we had with West Haven City. And what we did is we, looking over state code, were required to notify a city. If, if there's, if there's development taking place in there, within their annexation area, then we're required to notify them of urban development. And we did just that. We gave them the time, the required time allotted, which was 90 days. They, they did give us a reply. That reply, it wasn't, it came in the format of, of an objection to this. At that point, it was in our court. So what we did is we met with the county commissioners to get their take on what, what's the appropriate action. So after meeting with them yesterday, it was decided that we would continue running this application through for approval through the county subdivision process. And if, if, when the time comes that West Haven City is ready, ready And if, if, when the time comes that West Haven City is ready, ready to annex, they can work with the owner and the development to bring this property into their, their city boundary. What, pretty clear what we're looking for today, final, final approval of the, this twenty four unit development. And what they, what they've submitted in order to. Get this planned before you includes. Short list is a final plat. A final civil plans and cost estimates. These cost estimates would improve. Would include subdivision improvements. It would also include the. Improvements within the development that. Cover landscaping and those common area improvements. Here's the page one of the plat. These, these units will be, they'll be, they'll be one fiveplex and one six, or I'm sorry, and four sixplexes. Sorry, three sixplexes. And there you can see numbered one through fifteen are the storage units. That are reserved only for the residents in the Lilac Estates. They're not open to. And then you have building sixteen and seventeen. Those are existing structures that, that will be used for the, for homes as well, as part of this development. And you also have some, you can see labeled there agricultural parcel, ten point four acres, which will remain. Open agricultural use. On that north edge, you can see they've, they've labeled this future public right of way. That will be relabeled after reviewing what, what took place on the north side, on the West Haven side, there's actually a park there. So for the chances of a road going in there, at least at this time are pretty slim, so. It means to secure some type of public amenity. Planning recommended that maybe they, they have a twenty foot trail easement. And the developer who's with us today, Mr. Val Sanders and. Mr. Mel.
Peterson.
Peterson are here with us tonight. And so they are in agreement with that trail easement. Here we, we included the landscape plan. It shows some of the turf grass that's going to be planted, a tot lot. Some of the. Plantings that will take place throughout the development. Do you have some, these, these are part of the construction drawings. Skip through some of these. The zoning for this area is A two, which permits the P R U D through a conditional use permit. They already have a conditions permit approval. Here, here, this page shows the staff's recommendations. Subdivision improvement agreement with the final plat. An escrow account for all remaining improvements, including landscaping and right of way improvements of one thirty five hundred West Street. The final plat shall depict the twenty foot trail easement. The HOA documents and C C N Rs are reviewed by a planning office and the attorney's office. And a signature block for the Taylor West River Water District. There's, there's definitely opportunity for the planning commission to add any conditions to. If they see anything that might take place, something that comes to mind for me. Is right now they, they, they plan to lease that act ground. Allow a farmer to farm that act ground. When that leases up. Have, have a plan to how that, that act space is going to be made. So it just doesn't turn to weeds. Just a thought. That, that contingency may already have been considered by.
Questions, Commissioner? Any, any questions for the applicant? Sure. We can address that with, with the applicant. Yeah, yeah, come on up and give us your name and address for the record. Sorry. We have to get you on the microphone.
My name is Val Sanders. I'm the property that we're talking about right now. Ever since I've owned it, it's been farmland ground. It's been farmland ground all the way back to. Back when it was love, Lenzel, Fabelo, back in the day. I have no intentions of changing it from that. I've got a gentleman that's actually farming and doing it now, which would be brilliant. And he has some property next to me and I don't foresee any changes in the future. It's worked good for what we've been doing for the last. Twenty five years that I've owned it. Well, it's that I've had, I've had a long time. So since we've owned it, it's been farmland ground. It's always been farmland ground. We've leveled it two, three different times. It's getting fertilized all the time and. I hate to see it turn to weeds or anything else, but might have been suggested earlier because that'd be ridiculous because they're putting fertilizer on it every year. They're doing everything to keep a good ground. That's as we said right now, in fact, it's in better shape now than I think it's ever been in. So it just keeps getting better and better and better every year. So I hate to see it go to waste. In fact, even the property next to it, it's not part of this. It's been already leveled and planted and then there'll probably be plot up again and planted again. And it just keeps breaking the ground down. So it just makes it better and better and better. So I don't know how to explain it, but it just keeps better every year. So that's just how farmland works.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, commissioners. Whenever you've. All the questions answered that you want, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, final approval of Lilac Estates pred subdivision. Based on the recommendations in our packet, five recommendations in our packet. You guys need to list them or is it, we cover those? And the findings in our packet, the three findings in our packet.
Counselor, are we okay with that?
Yes, I would like to raise a question though. It may be wise to ask if there are any conflicts of interest on this. There was mention of a planning commissioner, which.
We, we addressed this in the, previously when this, we need to address it each time that it comes up.
I obviously wasn't here before. I don't know what was addressed before. What, what was the outcome there?
We, we all were aware, Bren disclosed his relationship to the property and we. Participation.
Okay, so.
And we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I have no financial gain, at least the property, that's it.
Okay, so.
If it stays in farm ground, it's better.
Okay, it's up to the commissioner ultimately what you want to do. I, I, yeah, and if you've already dealt with it and you feel that that's sufficient, that's up to you.
That's good to get in the record each meeting. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and address it again, so.
Okay, hold off on my.
Yeah, we'll, we'll back up the motion. We didn't get a second yet, so I think we're okay there. So, okay, commissioners, any concerns of conflict of interest on this item?
No.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and I'll ask for the motion.
I'll restate the motion to approve final or recommend final approval for the Lilac Pred subdivision based on the five. Staff recommendations and three findings in our packet.
Think you have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Commissioner Andreaati?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick? Commissioner Clontz? Commissioner, Commissioner Wickern, sorry.
I.
Commissioner Call? Commissioner Edwards?
I.
Chair votes I. Adam passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Felix, item three point two, L V R zero five thirteen twenty one, consideration in action. On a request for approval of an amended open space preservation plan for the Riverbend Cluster Subdivision located at forty three hundred west, twelve, or excuse me, fourteen hundred south.
Yes, I had, sir. Thank you, commissioners. Here we have before you a proposal to amend the open space plan. This, this is a little bit different. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be trashing the, the previous plan. We'd, we'd have that previous plan on hand. And this would be an alternate. An amendment. The reason why we've, we've decided to do that is because there's opportunity for this developer to work with the irrigation district. To create an irrigation pond that would serve this local area for secondary water. And that irrigation pond will be placed within open space parcel A, and I'll show you that in just a minute. This, this amendment to the open space plan is completely within phase one of the development. To, to address some of the concerns that might come about that was received from the public. There's the neighbors of this, of this property, Mr. Ron Rod Herrick or Ron Herrick. Sent us an email yesterday. And in that, his, his concern is that the open space plan shows a little strip of land included. There's, there's currently a dispute over who owns that land. And so what, what the developer did to kind of take care of this is they left that area off of the phase one drawing. The subdivision plat does not include any of that disputed area. And so what I did is I made some calculations based on the phase one. Just to make sure that with the lot development and the open space, they still have enough open space, even though they've excluded that disputed land. And they do, they have the sixty percent, three percent space, which is well above what they were. And so. I, I have another slide near the end of this presentation that should have a little, little more clarity for you guys. This is located in A one zone and the cluster subdivision does have provisions for. A development to amend their open space. Considering that the open space plan was approved well at the beginning, it's, it's to be expected that by the time they go to report, there's going to be some tweaks and changes and things. And so that's why we provided that for them. So here we are today. Going to the next slide. Here's, here's the, the dedication plat for phase one. If you bring your attention to open space parcel G, on the east side, running all the way along parcel G. Up to where that little jog is. That's the disputed area. You have the fence line. And then you have the subdivision boundary. And then you have open space parcel A. Which will contain the hooker here. Potential upper irrigation. Want. The, the plan that was submitted in your packets. Is this three point seven acres divided out for the irrigation pond as labeled as parcel L. The plan that they're actually looking to go with. Is on this slide. You can see if I toggle between the two. This is the plan they're looking to, to, to use. The reason why they've chosen to do this plan is hooker irrigation would like to have more area, more capacity for that irrigation pond within parcel. Which is five acre parcel L and three point seven acre, which is the common area. For the phase one. Here, here's an overlay. To also indicate, so what I did is I, the, the red lines is the open space plan. The green lines are the dedication plat. You can see the disputed area. Was indeed left out of the phase one dedication plat. But included with the open space. So. That's why what I've done is included some conditions. I know the report that I sent did not have any conditions. But after reviewing it a little more detail, I was thinking maybe dovetail some of these conditions on to your approval. This is an option, a suggestion. One, approved open space plan is used to manage the open space because at this point. We, if we approve this plan that we have tonight. Then what the developer would like to have is an open space plan that draws, that shows diversion point from the Weaver River. But he'd also like to have an open space plan that utilizes hooker irrigation pond. What this condition does is it, it basically locks him into one, one of the two that he has. It, either one meets, meets code and either one would be approved based on your decision tonight. The final plat reflect the amendments to the open space plan. So going back to the plat here. So there would need to be a line drawn in and then a split from on parcel A. Just so that we have that clearly delineated on the dedication. And the third, final, the open space plan exclude the disputed area. I would anticipate at some point. They'll come to some resolution, but that will take place in a private arena away from today's approval.
And, and to that point, even with the disputed area. The open space meets the criteria of the code.
That's correct.
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay, one of the conditions we put on this previously was to ensure that the ag land. Stayed irrigated, you know, but what could be watered, stayed water, nearly water. We were told at that time that that's what those shares from hook irrigation is going to be used for is to water that. Now my concern is if they change directions and go to. Building upon, those shares will have to go to irrigation to provide secondary. Or, you know, what's the plan as far as that goes so that that condition continues to be met, even if they change the way they're providing secondary? Yeah, yeah, to be able to provide the secondary for the residential and water for the ag.
You know, I, I don't know a great detail on what was discussed with irrigation, perhaps the developer. Answer that.
Great.
Mister Ed Grant.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Ed Grant, one one nine nine two South Catania Drive, Draper, Utah, A four O two O. You're right, Commissioner Edwards, the, we do need to provide water for the agricultural portion, you know, that we're leaving behind. And, and it, it's really going to be the same answer as if we go with the river water. There's a farmer bringing the river water, if that goes through, who is going to provide the water for the agricultural portion of the land? If, if that doesn't work out and we go to sort of what we're calling Plan B here and we go with hooker irrigation. We will also have somebody, a farmer farm that land and, and he will have that water. He will bring the water to the, to the property. So we, it's, it's really exactly the same deal as we have before. And, and this is also a condition you might recall of your final plat approval. So let's remember all we're doing here now is we're getting open space plan approved, so.
But my concern is, is now you're changing where that water's coming from. I mean, to be able to, the water don't necessarily, a farmer can't move the water, especially on this ditch. There's not that much time on it. So my concern is, is where is this all of a sudden? Where are they going to be able to move the water from to provide it? You know? I, I've farmed off of this ditch before and there, that head gate's running seven days a week.
We've already had discussions, you know, with, with a farmer who's interested in this, who is able to farm in that. Who is able to farm in that area, if that's what you mean, you know, the, the, the water of this particular farmer, you know, is, is uh is local to that area. So.
Didn't we put a requirement on this that the water had to stay with the land? So how, how can, if, I mean, is that farmer going to move that water and leave it with that ground permanently to meet that requirement?
You've, you've made, you know, you've made your recommendation and everything. And so, you know, we, we're aware of that. Farmers we're talking to are aware of uh.
I just require, my concern is, is this, if we go with this option, it's going to completely change how that water's going to come there. I, I just, I feel it can't be met if they go to this option.
So are we talking right? The, the entire amount of shares attached to that? Were we talking about a split for the open land? And the pressurized secondary?
Right. You know, our code, our, our code. But the, you know, my concern is, well, it's just like when we put the conditions up before, it was based on the state of proven those points of diversion out of the river. Which as of last week happened, I, I was, I followed on that. So my concern is, is, you know, I, 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 I'm all in favor of seeing Hooper build a pond. There's a huge benefit to the community to have Hooper build a pond. But my concern is, is still if they do that, how are, how are we still going to meet the requirements we put on subdivision?
You know, what I'm seeing currently being introduced into the ag picture out best there. We're seeing a lot of this drip irrigation. And so what these guys, what these farmers are doing is, is taking their, their water turn essentially and then, and then pumping it to create pressure to pressurize these, these uh the uh drip lines that, that they've placed in the property. So here's just a thought on this, especially for the land that's, that's a little bit better quality for farming this entire open space area is that maybe uh to a certain degree, that becomes pressurized so that they can just use their pressurized water pressurize their, their system for the ag land. And I realize that that's not going to take care of all of this act. But it does take care of some where they may plant onions or something along that line where they can actually utilize that drip system. I, I think that there's going to be some changes within Hooper that addresses how that water is distributed. Because you still have a majority of the farmers that use the gravity flow. But more and more you're seeing uh farmers go to this, you know, this pressurized drip. And the pressurized drip is actually better facilitated by a pressurized system. So I don't know if that's something that can be discussed going forward to kind of mitigate at least some of the concern on this. But I think that it's something that within Hooper irrigation is going to have to be addressed because that particular new method has created some new issues, some new problems um out in the farm community there. So I, I don't know if that helps or hinders or answers any questions. I think it's one form of a possible mitigation.
Uh, I guess where I'm going with this is we still don't know, you know? I think, you know, like Commissioner McCormick brought it up earlier, which one, you know, I, I don't, I want one or the other. And, you know, I think we need to know that before we make a recommendation.
Can I ask you a question? So I, so um that's brought up the accepting one or the other. Water stays with the land. I, I guess I don't see the complication of having that water be specific. Farmland and set, and the secondary provided.
Well, it's cause, do they have enough to provide both of my concern? It is where the concern comes from.
Well, no, but.
Cause they have to take, well, you have to turn shares into Hooper to provide that secondary water. So those are going.
Shares that, that if this, the way that this works out is let's forget about the river water for a minute. This is kind of in lieu of, this is going back to the way that the property was originally irrigated and farmed over the years over the decades. And that is that the water for this was provided by Hooper irrigation. So now if you take that Hooper irrigation water and you split some of it off, and I'm not sure what the right, you know, what the formula is, but you're going to split some of that off. It's going to have to go be dedicated to go into that pond every week. So that there's plenty of water coming back out of it to facilitate the amount of lots that are in this subdivision. That's kind of, so the, the, the problem here is, is, is there enough water combined to take the water out every week to provide pressurized water for the subdivision as well as still be able to irrigate the open space with gravity flow? Is that?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm going. And that's where.
Sorry, it's, it's a physical amount of water, just to finish that thought, is what the concern is here.
I think they have twenty seven shares or something like that over there, if I remember right.
We do.
So.
There's the, they can acquire more shares. The problem is, is the, the amount of time that's in that ditch won't allow. If they put more shares in, all it does is it, it takes the, the time of each year. There's only so much, there's only so much water that that ditch can have in it seven days a week. And.
Right now it's like a thirty eight minute ditch.
That's the point, the river is.
Well, it's out of the Hooper Canal. Nothing's come, well, it comes out of the river a long ways away and hits the canal. No. River rights are a whole nother thing. Cause if they, it, right, right now they're put in for a point of diversion change through the state engineer to pull out of the river.
To fill the irrigation.
No, it's not my under. I believe, Mr. Grant. It's either, it, it'll probably ultimately be either or, correct?
Are you talking about the, the river right versus the Hooper water?
Yes, yes. I mean, if the river right gets approved. That's what we've always talked about. That's what you approved last time. And I might add with the condition that, you know, the farmland has sufficient water, the, the, what I'm, what I'm saying here, and I wonder if, 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 if I might. It seems to me that this is a very simple decision at this point. And that is the, the way that we had approved before was a river right with some, you know, with the agricultural open space, we'll have a farmer farm that. And you put a condition, not at this point in time on the open space time. But you put a condition on that when we went to final plat. So you sort of you know, engineering, you, everyone gets another bite at the apple to make sure that, you know, we have a viable plan at that point. To me, the only thing we're doing here tonight respectfully, and, and, and if I'm wrong, please advise. The only thing we're doing is we're saying here's, here's one way of doing it, draw it from the river and, and uh, you know, put it on this open space plan. All we're doing tonight is we're agreeing that we can put a pond on the westernmost part of the property and do it that way. The specifics, the details of, of the water, um, that's really in my mind, an engineering question. I planning quest, question, questions of, of uh, you know, Hooper irrigation in this case. Um, and, and that will be done at final plat. I, I just, I really would urge you and request that right now, let's approve this plan. Details to follow, but we, I've always said, I've been working on this thing since last March. I've always said, we don't want a weed patch out there. We want a viable farm. We want to be the positive poster child of what, how to do it right here in, in Weaver County. And, and hopefully that's.
No, I appreciate your comments. And I, I just feel the details mean a lot in this one. We approved it the other way. Then, I mean, I, I don't like this either or option. I want one or the other. So we know what's moving forward. So I, I would rather see a decision made. Whether or not it's, you know, if you're going to go with Hooper, go with Hooper and let's, then that's how we will, how I will make, I would approve this. I, the way it sits today, I'm not going to, I won't be in favor of either or. There's too many unknowns. So.
Well.
Just my thoughts.
Be in favor of either or, but you can only pick one, mix them?
No. I mean, I don't think you, well, you could mix them a little bit depending on how it comes, but I want to, I would like to see. You know, one or the other, because if I, my concern is, is if they do go the Hooper route, which to be honest with you, I hope they do. I think a pond would be great over there. Is, will that same river water get approved and get moved? So you could water part of it with the river water and still have enough Hooper to water to provide for ninety homes. I mean, twenty seven shares. I want to put Greg on the spot, but twenty seven shares to ninety something home, they don't know what the equation would be, even if Hooper, if that's enough Hooper water to, you know, oh, just to water the residential portion, let alone the rest. So I just feel there's too many unknowns here. I don't like either or. I would support a.
Only one option. I mean, if we say you can pick one or the other, but not both. Then it's either what we've already approved or this new plan.
Which then the new plan, we don't know if there's enough water, I feel.
Between him and the water company.
Where it was a condition made on final, that's why I, I, that's why I'm not, I won't support it unless we have one or the other.
So, so my question is, it comes down to a quantity of water, the physical quantity of water. So.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question here. Before there was a subdivision here. They have twenty seven chairs of water. That right? And they watered it with the twenty seven chairs. So, well, some of them.
Everywhere where the house was going, they never.
Okay, so the, I guess so then that would be new water to where those homes are.
That's my concern.
So. It, it would, except for the fact that Hooper has a, a requirement per lot that, that they have to go by. That's what's in their conditions of this. So, so.
Commissioner, let me just say one thing. We have enough water to water the residential. There is no question about that. We have it. Okay, so let's put that aside. The only issue here is is the agricultural portion. And, and I think we've been very clear that, you know, we recognize that we need to provide water for that. And so that's what we intend to do. Again, I, I guess I'll say it at the risk of being repetitive. I believe that that issue is something that uh comes at final plat. It comes to engineering, it comes to all those things. And you've already made that condition that we have to, we have to water this farm and make it green. And uh, that's our responsibility. So.
But we also adopted that, the open space plan with that that was approved. Now you're wanting to amend it and make a change.
Yes, we are. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're instead of digging it out of the river, we're going to have a pond. In my mind, it's as simple as that.
Oh, I, I agree. It would be very simple, but I, my problem is, is you, you're, you're two, you got two options here. You know, give us the option you're going to go with and then we could, you know, either stick with the way it was originally and go with that or say I'm going down the Hooper road and I wouldn't have a problem because then, you know, then the documents would be, we would know.
This isn't final approval, I guess.
Oh, it's already been, it's already been final approved. We're, we're done with it. They're coming in for an amendment. So we won't see it again if we approve this amendment.
Well, let's.
You will see it at final plat.
Yes.
County Commission will, we've already, planning commission's already.
And final plat for, for phase two, you still have, we still have to come back to you, get the second bite at the apple. The final.
So the board of county commissioners will buy off on if we change this tonight, correct? It, or.
The open space, the open space plan won't go to the county commission, but final plat approval for phase two will go to the county commission as well as final plat approval for phase one.
So I guess my question is, is, is if we approve this. Then it would have to be done before the final plat approval?
Either that or as a condition of approval prior to giving um any kind of a escrow back prior to accepting improvements. There are a few triggers, a few steps along the way of uh installing that subdivision in which the, this issue could become.
Okay, so maybe I got a workaround for this that still gets Mr. Grant what he wants, but you just triggered in my mind. So what if we put a condition on it that we support this? But the condition is, is once they make a decision on option one or two, I'm going to say, comes back to the planning commission. Then we approve it then. And then it, I mean, basically we're saying, I mean, essentially we're supporting this. But we still then, if they choose to go the Hooper road, then they can bring us the documents that they're still meeting our previous conditions. Then we move it forward. I would support that.
You, you want a condition to bring it back to the planning commission?
Once the decision's been made.
Right.
On which route they're going, whether it's option one or two. Well, then I'm not trying to complicate it. That would make me feel better, but then hopefully it's Mr. Grant what he needs to, you know, move forward with that. Or move forward pursuing an option, you know, one way or another.
Well, a, and I think in the end, to answer your question, it's pretty simple. We need to know how much water, if you really want that question answered, and this is your question. We really need to know how much, how many acre feet there were in the river rights. And we need to know how many acre feet there are in the Hooper irrigation rights. And where we already approved it from, from the river perspective, if these two are at all equal, the Hooper, the Hooper irrigation shares and the, and the rights from the river. As far as I'm concerned.
I don't know how many, how many, how mu- how many acre feet their shares are worth, but the, the river rights are between the two river rights on the points of diversion they're trying to change. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Grant, it's almost two hundred acre, two hundred.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
On your, your river rights, between the two river rights on those point of diversion changes, it's almost, or maybe it's just over. One's like a hundred and sixty eight acre feet and the other one's like thirty something acre feet.
It, it's a substantial amount. And quite honestly, I'm, I'm not remembering the specifics of it. Um, but it, it was plenty of water.
So I'm not sure on the Hooper side how mu- what that equates to, but I mean.
So, so I'm going to draw on someone who's sitting here, if he will, to give us that information. If you don't mind, Mr. Sig Miller.
Just because he's Hooper's engineer.
Yeah. And we really appreciate that. Sorry for drawing you into the fire here.
It's all right. I, I hung around wondering what was going to happen.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Greg Sig Miller and um I live at fifty nine O two South forty one fifty West in Roy, Utah. Um, I am the city engineer, or excuse me, the company engineer for Hooper Irrigation Company. I'm also one of the water districts engineer and that's why I was here tonight. We have gone through the calculations. Hooper irrigation has a formula for higher density. That it's, that breaks it down a little bit more. I believe the number is twenty one point five shares of Hooper irrigation required for the ninety seven, ninety eight connections. That has to be class A shares. And, and these, um, the developer. They have that, they've assured us that they have that, I believe, are that the Hooper Irrigation Office has confirmed that, that they have adequate water for the pressure irrigation. I think the question is that of the flood irrigation on the remaining field property. Um, that would be with class B or a different class shares, not the same class, but a different class shares. And I, and I believe that he's working with a couple of different farmers. Those farmers would bring their water to that. That water would go through the ditches that it has gone through historically and, and irrigate those fields. Hope for irrigation is, is fine with the shares that they have with the irrigation water option. Does that answer your question?
If they put the pond in, are they going to put an head gate out of the ditch?
The, the pond needs to be the same elevation as the canal. Is that what you're talking about?
No, but they install a new head gate basically, so they're not using that same ditch.
It, it has to be basically low pressurized from the canal to the reservoir in order for it to work. And, and that's, that's in the design. It's, it's figured out.
But what you're asking about is going from the pond out to the gravity flow to the farm.
No, no, no.
No, okay.
I just meant, is the pond going to have a dedicated head gate, whichever one? So, okay, thank you. That, that makes me feel a lot better.
Thank you. That helps.
Good.
That's in. Question is that water's needed.
The open space.
And I think that goes back into the, there's two parts that make that happen. I think the agreement with Taylor West River Water makes that happen. So the water can't go somewhere else, which it doesn't. That's when they were, you know, that's when they're talking the river, right? That had to go to the HOA so that they couldn't sell that river right essentially. So I think in this case, if they give it to Hooper Irrigation, then Hooper Irrigation is going to maintain that system, the HOA would. But I, I guess for the open space, though, they would still have to deep the remaining water to the HOA so it stayed with the. Or. Cause it's still.
The uh, cl- class A for the residential, yes. And we have sufficient shares. Gentlemen, um, ladies and gentlemen. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. A new one, too. Our, our request is that you approve both. However. If you don't feel comfortable with approving both. We would ask that you approve the Hooper Irrigation five acre. Alternative that we gave you. If, if, if you don't feel comfortable approving both, then. I think at this point in time, that's what we want. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
I just wanted to just take a second to back up just a little bit and look at it from a more global perspective. If this is a brand new cluster subdivision that came in before you and your job is to essentially check the boxes and the ordinance to figure out whether or not it complies with what it doesn't. Uh, the question is, is whether or not they're providing an open space preservation plan that meets the ordinance. Now, there has been a concern in the past and continues to be a concern about whether or not open space has appropriate water. Primarily because we don't want them to turn into dust fields. Now, what I think we're doing in this particular case is we're looking at the open space saying, we know this is gonna be. Uh, crop production, so we know how much water needs to be on the property in order to, for it to yield any kind of crop. But if the applicant hadn't originally proposed crop production or selling it to a farmer, maybe it was just horse pasture. It still would have potentially met the cluster subdivision code for open spaces. And so in my mind, and, and forgive me if I'm being this bold, but i- in my mind, as long as there is the minimum amount of water necessary to keep the dust, fugitive dust down. Uh, I think it, it will comply with the. So I think some of the details are confusing, uh, and causing some confusion, only because that's what the original proposal was. But if we just check the boxes and the ordinance itself, I, as long as we keep the dust down, it's not causing a problem. Uh, I think whatever resulting open space plan will comply with that.
So I don't have concern with that charter later. Acting Director Newhart, as Chair said. Is we put that on there as a, as a requirement, you know, to get this approved. And, and I just want to ensure that that's being met. So, but I mean.
I appreciate that. I wa- I wanna just offer a, a word of caution when it comes to. Implementing and enforcing conditions of approval. One of the challenges that we have is finding conditions of approval that are reasonable and necessary, right, uh, to execute the ordinance. And so if there's a way for the applicant to execute the ordinance, so different, with a different alternative, that condition of approval is no longer relevant. We can't make up the rules as we go. Um, and so I just wanna just urge caution as you lock yourself into those conditions, as long as the applicant show that he's meeting the ordinance, that was something that's in my mind that I'm still concerned about. Is if we go, if, if this project goes with Hooper Irrigation. How, and no farmer comes to bring water to that open space area. What kind of water is it gonna take to keep fugitive dust down? And how is the applicant gonna provide for that in, in this option B? I, I would feel a lot more comfortable, and again, you guys do what you feel is best, but I feel a lot more comfortable if we were talking more about. Keeping fugitive dust down in the event that farmland is never farmed again. And then the applicant can choose who he leases or sells the property to, and i- if it happens to be a farmer. They bring their water, they get it out of the river, they then flood irrigate or do what they need to do, uh, to the property to go crop.
But isn't it, in, under the Cluster Code, the Planning Commission has the discretion. To ensure that the water's gonna stay for the ag open space, because they got bonus density off of that, stays. In ag production.
Yeah, so the Cluster Code doesn't require ag production. All it requires is the pres- preservation of open space that could potentially be used for ag production. So keeping in mind, the, the code talk says prime agricultural land. If you, so it doesn't talk about water.
How do you have prime agricultural land with outwater?
So that, that is, uh.
We, we, we've had this discussion a hundred times, and from my understanding is when they come for the Cluster Approval. That that's when it's up to the planning, this planning commission to, that they can put that requirement on the land. Is that not? How? Missed hold?
That, no, 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 there, there are, there is the flexibility and the ability for the planning commission to put together or require a plan to be put together. If the applicant comes in and says, I don't wanna go in that direction, I wanna go in this direction, our obligation is to look through the ordinance and verify whether or not they are complying with, with the ordinance. If, if the suggestion is that the Cluster Subdivision Code says that we can require. It to be crop, uh, production, so it has to be ag producing land. Uh, that's not what the Cluster Code says, nor is it what the planning commission intent was at the time. Uh, when that Cluster Code was adopted. In fact, that the planning commission's intent, when the Cluster Code was adopted, was to provide opportunities, not mandates, for future agriculture. In other words, if somebody comes in with, um, super salty ground or super clay ground that has no ability to produce crop. But that's the best agricultural land that, that is on the property that they own. They could come in with a plan essentially to bring that to some kind of agricultural production, or they could put horses on it. So either way, it still complies with the Cluster Subdivision Code. There's no mandate or requirement for it to be, to it, for it to be, uh, productive agricultural.
But this one, we put that requirement on it when it got its approval. Right?
Right, right.
That's, we're working on this one in particular that has that.
Right. Wha- what I'm suggesting is if the applicant is saying, maybe this is not gonna be farmed ground. Maybe we're looking for Plan B in case the farmer, the deal with the farmer falls through, that would still comply with your ordinance. And so hanging yourself. Um, up on the previous condition based on it being farmed, might not be appropriate, because it still can comply with the Cluster Subdivision.
They have to bring it back because now they're changing it.
That's what we're doing today.
I know, but they're still wanting to keep it agricultural as of today. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that the water stays with the ground. If they wanna bring it back and say, yeah, it's gonna be a dust filled, then, yeah, let's.
Well, my recommendation, if they bring it back to be a dust filled, my recommendation would be to not allow it to be a dust filled, have a minimum amount of sprinkle, pressurized sprinkle irrigation out of Hooper Irrigation. To water it once a mo- or once a week or something like that, to make sure that.
I agree. And like I said, that's, I'm just looking at this one in particular.
Yeah, abso- absolutely. And, and I think that's an option. If, if the, uh, proposal today from Mr. Grant is that it'll stay crop production and there's no other, um, alternative that is being considered, then, then certainly. Uh, but what I'm hearing is there's a possibility that maybe a particular farmer won't be farming the, the property and won't be pulling, uh, water out of the river immediately. And, and if that's the case, if I'm, if I'm correct on that, uh, Mr. Grant, uh, i- in those cases, it still can be approved with the alternative open space plan. And then in time, as Mr. Grant, uh, looks to find someone to purchase the property or lease the property, who has water rights that can pull from the river. Or who can pull from ditch infrastructure that is in. Uh, that can happen at that time. Approving both will give him the flexibility to go either direction. I think both directions comply with, uh, the Cluster Subdivision Code, as long as I do think it's a legitimate condition to place on it, that it does not become a dust. That's health, safety and welfare. Thank you, and I'm sorry.
Thanks, Charlie. Appreciate that. Okay, any other? Questions you're concerned? Uh, Mr. Grant or staff?
I, I guess just the last question is whether we make the condition that we approve both, but one or the other must entirely be used. Is there validity in that? Or we just trust that? It's gonna work out.
I don't necessarily have a problem with both if, if the folks that are involved in the, uh, river right. Are open to it, and they decide they wanna move that point of diversion, and if it gets approved, that's. You know, I think that that's more of a, a secondary thing, especially since Mr. Grant has expressed. The preference of going with the Hooper Irrigation, uh, system and implementation.
I just wanted to make sure that we investigated that because it's something that staff brought up.
Yeah. I, I mean, and I leave that up to whoever makes the motion to, you know, phrase that accordingly, but that's. That's not a concern for me.
Mr. Chairman, it may be appropriate to ask the applicant if. In the event it is only pressurized irrigation, is there pressurized irrigation that will be provided to the open space area for minimal irrigation? Because if that's the case, and that's the backup plan, it's a great back, backup plan, and it will meet the code. And then after that, it's all, it's all gravy if a, if a farmer comes in and brings their own water.
So I guess we'll, we'll ask that question. I'll let you just answer from, from what Charlie mentioned.
And it is the question whether or not the agricultural property will be pressurized irrigation versus flood irrigation. Was that?
I think it's just a potential for it to be in case, in case there is, uh, someone doesn't come along, it's going to flood irrigate it.
Uh, Commissioner, we, we've, uh, we've known from day one, you know, when we started getting this discussion, I said this before, this is the, the elephant in the room. But we've got two potential solutions here, and, and we'd like to pursue both. I don't think I can give you an answer right now whether it will be pressurized irrigation or whether it will be flood, but we certainly would consider both. And have it be the best for the, for the project and for the agricultural space.
I think more to what, Charlie, I mean, it's, is it gonna stay agricultural ground? Is it just gonna stay horse pasture that you're gonna be able to keep the dust down? The direction that question is.
Right, and Mr. Chairman, if I may ask the applicant. If you did go with Plan B, which is, um, to have the, uh, Hooper Irrigation infrastructure there. And there is no farmer that would provide flood irrigation to the open space area, do you have the ability through the pressurized irrigation system to provide minimal irrigation to the property?
Are, are you saying, would we? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm asking if you've got the ability to get the, the, uh, the shares of the rights of the permission, whatever it may be, from Hooper Irrigation to provide sufficient, um, amount of water. To sprinkle that land, so it's not a dust bowl.
We do have, um, a number of shares of cla- of class B shares. You know, that we got when we purchased Mr. Hanson's property. And certainly they would be candidates to, to be used on that property, and there are five of them. I think, if I understand your question. You're, you're really saying are the, those five shares, would they be sufficient? To provide.
Pressure irrigation to keep the dust out.
But, and again, I, but I am, I am not an engineer.
Well, but, but.
I'm not, uh, but I guess.
It's a subjective question in that if it's, if it just needs to be enough to keep the dust down once a week, it's a minimal amount. That, that five or five and a half shares, whatever it is, may, may do that.
I mean, we do not intend to have a dust bowl. We're not interested in that, so we, we intend to do the right thing.
Anything else? Okay, yes, I'm ready for a motion.
All right, I recommend approval of this Open Space Preservation Plan Amendment. Trying to see its item. For the Riverbend Cluster Subdivision. File number LVR zero five one three two one. Um, with two recommendations. The first, that minimal irrigation must be included in either. Plan to provide dust mitigation on the open space. And two, that open space plan exclude disputed area on the east side of open space G. And this recommendation is based on. Um, the following. Findings, a proposed open space preservation plan amendment conforms to the Cluster Code, the creation of an irrigation water holding pond owned, managed and maintained by the Hooper Irrigation District will provide a mutually beneficial public utility.
I just have one question for clarification. When you mentioned open space G.
That's, it'd be.
Okay. So. So to clarify, open space plan exclude disputed area on the east side of open space B. Thank you.
And the rest of your motion remains the same.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I can second that.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, we'll go through roll call. Commissioner Call. Commissioner Andrea.
Hi.
Commissioner Edwards?
Nope.
Commissioner McCormick? Commissioner Fonce? Commissioner Wicker?
Hi.
Chair of all ties as well. Item passes five two. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda. Forty three hundred west fourteen, oh. Oh, yeah. Okay, we, we need to have a correction on the.
South and thirty six hundred west.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'll say it right now.
Okay. Is that something we need to go back through council, or are we okay just making that change administratively?
Did you state the address during the motion itself?
I've said Riverbend subdivision. I did not state the address.
Okay, if that's the case, I, I think if you just state that the record should reflect the correct address and state without addresses, I think that's fine.
All right. Then it's understood that the correct address is thirty six hundred west, nine hundred south, for the proximity thereof. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda. Legislative item recognized as item four point one, public hearing to receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding rez- a rezone. From A one to R one ten. Property located at twenty eight fifty one west, thirty one hundred north, Plain City. Mr. Burton, is that the correct address for this?
Twenty eight fifty one west, thirty one hundred north, Plain City, yep.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Commissioners, um, as you, as Chair Favero stated, this is a rezoning application. Uh, near Plain City, um, in their, actually in their proposed annexation area. What, what, uh, we've got tonight is, uh. A request to have a, a public hearing. We've noticed for a public hearing for this body to be able to make a recommendation to the County Commission on this item. Uh, it's fairly straightforward. It's a request from A one, which is lots that are forty thousand square feet minimum to R one ten, which is lots that are ten thousand square feet minimum with eighty feet of lot width. Um, this proposal. If approved. Will have a, the result will be a fifty eight lot subdivision. Um, the developers and the owners understand that there is an expectation to tie this subdivision into the subdivision to the south. Um, that is also going through the rezoning process. And I don't remember if, if, there were probably a few Commissioners, um, that weren't at that meeting, but there was, just to fill everybody in, there was a rezone property. It's Nielsen Homes. It's called JDC Ranch directly to the south of this. Um, similar zoning, so they requested what we call R one twelve, so instead of ten thousand square foot lots, uh, twelve thousand. They'll also have a couple other different types of development, but right up adjacent to this piece will be. If that rezone goes through, will be a, a similar type subdivision. And we've requested that this developer tie into that subdivision and make it look like it's the same neighborhood, same type of development. Uh, we've also requested that they tie into the trails and roads somehow. Um, we anticipate that this. Proposal, where it's not as impactful as the JDC property, it's not as many lots. Uh, we anticipate that it, it might move forward faster than that other project. And so what we've done is we've made a recommendation on, on if this is approved by the Planning Commission. That, um, before it gets to the County Commission, that the County Commission can see how exactly it's tying in. Um, if there, if there's going to be a trail corridor that, that lines up at the back of these lots on the. West side. Uh, or if there will be some kind of, uh. Alteration to, to where the, that, uh, trail can connect up with what is being currently proposed, which is a ten foot trail within, uh, the public right of way. This proposal also includes a kind of a little pocket park that you can see here, uh, with trees that will be planted, uh, near. The, the proposal's actually to plant trees in the front yards, uh, instead of in the, in the right of way. As the, as the owner came and met with us, we, as staff, were comfortable with the location of roads, as long as, like I said, as long as they tie into. The JDC property. Uh, just wanna go over a few things with you really quick. Uh, the developers provided feasibility letters. That's one of the requirements for a rezone, is they have to provide, we wanna know generally how they're going to get water, sewer, secondary, if that's going to be available. So the owner has, they plan to connect to Central Weaver Sewer for the, for sewer connections and Bonavista Water for culinary. There's a plan to use Weaver Box Elder Conservation District for secondary water. And the applicant has provided their feasibility letters to us and they're part of the packet. As far as the general plan goes, as you probably know, our general plan doesn't necessarily cover this area. It anticipated that this would be annexed into Plain City. And so what we, part of our recommendation is to include in a development agreement, a clause that states that the future owners. If this is rezoned, the future owners of the property will not protest annexation in the plain city. We do want it to be annexed into Plain City at some point.
We have, can we have a question again?
Sure.
How do you do that? How do you take away the rights in the future, people who would vote to be annexed and or not? And how do we do that?
So if it's written into a development agreement and it's recorded on the property. The people who buy the property in doing their due diligence.
Well, would that be recorded on their deed?
Yes. It, it will be recorded on the title of the property.
Thank you.
Yep, they will, they, they should be made aware of, and this will be up to, I think this, there's, there is some responsibility of the developer. To disclose that in case people don't realize that. But they are going to have to understand that they are wavy their rights to protest. Let's see here. We haven't heard from Plain City. We haven't sent out notice. We typically don't send out notice to Plain City for a rezone. State codes say we have to send them a notice when we receive an actual subdivision application, which we plan to do. It's my understanding the developer has had conversations with Plain City and it might be good for you to ask questions about that. So you can have a better understanding of Plain City's opinion on this. I have looked at the zoning nearby, the nearby zoning in Plain City, you've got, you, you do have some ten thousand square foot lots to the west. You also have RE fifteen zoning, which is fifteen thousand square foot lots that, that kind of surround this piece. And so as staff, we don't believe that this proposal is, is too incompatible to approve. We feel that it is compatible enough that Plain City could annex it in the future and that it, that it, that it will work out okay with, with their existing zoning. Sure.
So you said that Plain City has zoned our ten property there. Is it actually zoned our ten? Or was the, did the HOA use like, because like our fifteen will have a HOA provision where you can take a certain amount of land. Make an HOA out of it. So is it actually zoned our ten? Or is it zoned our fifteen and they've used a provision to make an HOA out of it?
It's a really good question.
I believe it was because if on the, of that particular subdivision. On the west side of its power line corridor, and they made that a big park. So I think it went through Plain City as a PRUD. Because, and they got that downzoning because of the, the park that they built under the power line corridor. This, I mean, he's got it on the GeoGet, oh, it's right here. So that stuff to the. That parcel A park space and parcel B park space, that's the, that's in Plain City and then these have the smaller lots. So I'm, it's my understanding that it was a period based on building that park.
Thank you, sorry.
Absolutely. Just as a reminder that this planning commission will be making a recommendation to the county commissioners. And you've got some, some pretty wide discretion in that, that recommendation that you make and including the findings. Our recommendation is that, that you recommend approval of the rezone subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report. Happy to answer any questions if you have any, any other questions, I guess.
That's okay. Any, any other questions for staff?
Hey, Mr. Burton. Commissioner Wickham brought this up earlier, but it was a great point. Is this going to be maintained by an HOA? And if not, who's going to maintain the park?
It's a good question. Typically. We, we would address that at like more of a subdivision level in conversations with the owner. I don't believe there previously, there, there wasn't a park shown. I don't believe there was a plan to have an HOA. But if there is a park and it's small enough to not really be a regional, you know, city park. We would recommend that there be an HOA that takes care of it.
My only concern, you know, I, I get a lot of this stuff comes later, but if we're gonna downzone a property, I mean. It, the way it sits today, even if they did, you know, a cluster or something like that, they could get with fifty percent lowest density twenty-nine. And we're asking for fifty-eight, just in the county portion of this. So I, I just would feel better before I would make a recommendation to county permission that, you know, some of these things. Are lined out and addressed so that we don't downzone a property, then all of a sudden, you know, you get a whole bunch of. Small lots.
Sure.
You know, the, if we look at this property to the, to the west there, they're building a park in order to get them smaller lots.
Absolutely.
You know, what, what is the benefit to the county and the residents to get? If we're gonna downzone it to those smaller lots, what the, what does the benefit come from?
Is, yeah, absolutely. Very reasonable to ask.
So you can condition, or whoever makes the motion, consider that for condition. And, and I would also, you know, maybe my two cents worth is, let's think about where that. Trail goes through. I think that now's a good time to. But to put. That in as well, so that, you know, the, when the subdivision is being thought out and engineered going forward can be considered as well. I don't, I, I don't necessarily care for what was, you know, maybe suggested and maybe that's all it is right now is a suggestion of putting a, a trail in front of homes. So I don't think that that works very well, in my opinion.
Think you bring up a very valid point, because when I, when you look at the surrounding areas. This is going to be because the property to the west doesn't have a connection. So when JDC goes in, or when that one starts to go, this is gonna be your connection from North Plain City Road to twenty-seven hundred north. Is gonna be on that street A and that street A, from my understanding, where they're proposing a, a trail in the front of these lots. So you're gonna have, I, I would assume, I'm not a traffic engineer, but you're gonna have a ton more cars. Because this is the road that gets you from one main road to another. This is kind of a east-west connector road now. And by putting that, the, that pathway in the front of these homes, you know, I think that, that brings some huge concern.
There's, if, if you and the county commission don't approve a pathway in front of the homes, it would still. There would still be an expectation of, you know, regular sidewalk there. But if, you know, if you have that conversation and the county commission has a conversation with the owner and they agree to it, yeah, maybe there, maybe there is that corridor. That goes through along the west side still.
So I guess a question for you, Steve, in this, where, where we have the, the leeway, I guess, to do this a little bit is because. This is what would be placed in that development agreement, correct? Because this is to approve or recommend approval of the rezone with the development, right?
Yep.
And answer that question, kind of going back to the previous subject. This is a legislative item. This is where we are making up rules. I mean, being fair and making them up, but making up rules. So do what you need to. That's right.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Please. Uh, this is the staff. Why is it that when we're changing the zoning, why do we have so much, so many conditions on changing the zone? From one zoning to the next zone? Why is there a trigger mechanism on this that all these other things need to be changed? If we change the zoning from A to R. Whether this developer does something with it or the next developer does something with it, why do we care? The next developer, not to, this developer's not a great developer, but the next developer might even be better, have better ideas, et cetera, et cetera. Why are we not okay just saying, okay, we're willing to change the zoning and leave it alone?
So I can speak to that a little bit. The, a, a property owner does not have a right to rezone their property. They have a right to apply. They have a right to the existing zoning and the existing uses that are listed under that zone. For example, they could do, you know, twenty or so acre sized lots right now. But because they're proposing to, to get more lots and to potentially get more money to change the law. The county has the opportunity to point out things that we would like to see with this, so that we're not just giving them free density.
Okay, but in reality, this property can be used for whatever in the future that it's gonna be, right? Until there's a triggering mechanism, which should not be zoning, in my opinion. It would be a subdivision application. That would be our triggering mechanism. If we have R connecting, R ten connecting to it, or we don't, doesn't really matter to me. Until they're gonna do something with the land, why do we care if it's A? Or R, or it's zoned R and they're farming it and keeping it in green belt, what does it matter? Until they're gonna develop the parcel.
It's a good question. And, and, and if you as a planning commission have enough trust in, in an owner that. That you, that you're okay to address that at a subdivision level, then, then you're, you're welcome to, to make that your recommendation. But I personally, just a, a, as, as a professional planner, understanding this, th- this is the county. This is the best time to ask for these things because it sets a clear expectation. The developer's not gonna come back a year down the road after a rezone and say, you, why didn't you tell me this back then? I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have bought it. We're setting a clear expectation now and we're also setting a clear expectation, painting a picture for the public.
Isn't that what our codes are for? Isn't that what our ordinance is for? That is a clear painting. A clear pathway for a developer, whether it be this one or the next one. That this is the direction that we're going with these parcels under these zonings. Why does it need to be at the time that we're rezoning?
So.
Asking for a change, right? Because right now, if, if that, if they wanted to move forward to meet the current county codes that's in there. Which in, in, whether they did a PRUD or a cluster and got their bonus density, he was entitled to twenty-nine months.
But that's.
He's asking for more to this change, so then that's where I feel it opens up.
But no one's getting anything more until you're selling lots, right? You're not recognizing, not recognizing gain until you're selling lots. So if it's labeled R and whatever, whatever, there's no recognized gain until you're doing a development. Now, if you change from an A to an R, there would be a recognized gain because we've, we've taken one step. Right? In, in allowing someone to be able to have smaller density. But still, they have to come to the county and say, here's our subdivision application. Can we do this?
Here's maybe what I'll say is when there is a, when there's an administrative item like a subdivision application. Let's say that you rezone the property and the county commission rezones the property with no conditions. They are now entitled to that zone and they're also, and they're, we, we actually wouldn't be able to tell them. That they cannot protest annexation at that point because we've, we've, we've lost our chance. So we're doing this now because we don't ever have another chance to do it.
So we did not have the same conversation about all of the property out west. That I'm aware of, but we're having this conversation about this A one piece.
Which property out west?
Randy Marriott's.
So that, that hasn't, there's, there's no proposed rezone out there.
It's not rezoned?
There, there is. There's a proposed rezone on, on part of the property out there.
So why did we not have this conversation then?
So we, we broached the conversation, but your points were taken. And, and it's actually something I've had some frustration with in, in my own career. The only time that we have to create new rules is with the legislative decision. It's either at rezone or when we're looking at text amendments or when we create a general. And so if our current rules aren't good enough, which I think to your point, we should have rules that are good enough. But if our current rules aren't good enough to get the public what they need. Then this is the only time that we have to, to implement those rules, even though we don't, we may not have a specific subdivision application in front of us. Fortunately for us, we can see what the, the, the future subdivision application is gonna be because the applicant has provided it. But if he didn't, if he just said, I wanted a new zone. He would be able to come in and say, I'm gonna chop these up. I'm gonna maximize my, my value. I'm not gonna put any parks or trails or trees or. Yeah, or connectivity, because the code i- in many cases isn't as clear as it needs to be to force that. We're working on it. We're, every single planning commission meeting or so, we've got some kind of legislative action that we're working towards. Trying to change the ordinances to make that more clear. Now, when you're looking out west on the, the Marriott property with that rezone. Question at that time would be very appropriate. What kind of things are we going to put in place? To ensure that it happens the way that we want it to happen? Now, there are a few things that we did get in place. For example, we had a, a site plan that they have proposed that was part of that rezone. And so we, we have a site plan that they're going to have to capitalize on, or excuse me, we're gonna capitalize on because they're gonna have to execute. But because it's in the M zone, that's one of the highest impact zones. And there wasn't a lot of residential or a lot of population centers out in that area. There's also a, a little bit lower threshold on how much are we actually gonna ask them to get? So it's kind of that question of givings and takings. Are we gonna require parks, trails, recreation, streets, all that kind of stuff out of that applicant? Versus are we gonna ask for that here? Residential, we're usually asking more. Just because in a residential, there's a lot more terrain on the community. That's where the people are coming into the community. Whereas commercial, we tend to ask a little bit less, just because there's gonna be a net gain through the, the reinvestment of retail tax base and the commercial taxes.
So we also, we also gave a, we gave a few things there, right? Like exhibit C here is water and sewer feasibility letter, which no longer has to happen. But these people have provided it.
Yeah, so that hasn't been stricken from the code and the direction that we received from you guys is to not strike it from the code. So it's, it's still in there.
Thank you.
I mean, those are all good points and, yeah. My experience being on the planning commission is just that. If the, if the world was perfect and codes were all the way they should be, then we should be able to just look at this that simply and say. You know, i- is this what we want to see in this area? An R ten versus the A one that it is now or something else? Unfortunately, we don't have codes that back that up. And thanks Charlie for, you, you did a nice job of explaining that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
My commit, Chairman, my concern is it seems like, and I'm not speaking ill of our staff, because I think we probably have the best staff out there. It allows for a little bit of overreach on zoning changes. It allows for a little bit of overreach, in my opinion, or the possibility for overreach where. We're just asking for a zoning change and we ask too much, where we should be asking those things during a building permit. Or during, dur- during a. Application for. A development. So that's, that's all I was put, why I was asking the questions.
No, it was great. It was a great question. And I, and I think to kind of add to that, that's why we're here. That's why the planning commission is here, is to look at that. And decide what should or shouldn't be asked for. In these circumstances where it comes in front of us on administrative items, hopefully we've done our job in the, in the, on the legislative side to make that. More the way that it should be or the way that it was wanted to be when those, uh, uh, conditions were, were put into motion. But as far as everything else goes, I think it's, it's a big responsibility for us as planning commission to take all of that into consideration. That's why these meetings. Go on and on and on and, and they should. It's, it's important. It's, it's the public's, you know, it's the public's business here. Yeah, yeah. Is there anything else for staff? And then we're going to, uh, open this up for, for the public hearing.
Thanks, thanks for your questions. Good conversation.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We are in public hearing. So having said that. That means that anybody from the public that is interested in speaking in regard to this legislative item. For a rezone to, from A one to R one O. In the location of twenty-eight fifty-one west and thirty-one hundred north can come up and speak away.
Crickets this time. Last time we had a roomful.
Same area.
It's right there too.
Did all the damage last time.
I think you're right. You're right. Okay. Well, seeing no interest from the public on that item, I will ask for motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
You better have a second, please.
All right.
Sorry.
Myself. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Clontz? All in favor of closing the public hearing? I opposed. Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. Keep us straight. All right, so now. All right. So now.
He just better tell Liam, Liam better do a better job of keeping us straight. Look at all these corrections he's had to make. Come on, whip Liam into shape.
Yeah, that's right.
He does a great job.
He gives us a little more latitude, apparently.
More latitude to make mistakes.
We ultimately hang ourselves. It's okay. It works out. All right. So having, uh, closed the public meeting, we'll go into discussion for this item among the planning commission. Any discussion questions or concerns, comments, please?
I'll just kind of reiterate, reiterate what I've brought up. I, I don't think this does fit in with the surrounding area, um, especially the biggest difference between your R fifteen, your R twelve and your R ten is your street frontage. It changes the community. It changes the, the, um, the look and feel of it. Um, I think it requires more park space when you have that small of a yard, more, um, public's common space than what is shown. And so I think it's better addressed in a PRUD, um, when you're getting that tight. So my inclination is to decline. I don't know if there's a way to say approved as an R twelve. Um, but R twelve, I think is the smallest. I'd feel comfortable going because of that street frontage. And, um, right now they do have the option of making a PRUD. I mean, they could do that. And I think Bram brings up or Commissioner Edwards brings up a great point. Like the, right now they could get twenty, how many? Twenty nine lots and jump it up to fifty eight and no common space. I just don't know if that's.
They got a little bit of common space, but I agree with you. There, there should be more. I mean, the, the other ones that we've done these rezones with have been with, with master development.
Yep.
With more master planning put in place and just to, I mean, I, and I think that kind of goes back to Commissioner Collins' point. You know, when, when we're seeing more, right now, my understanding what they're proposing is basically just going to R one with nothing else in there.
Mr. Chair. I have a different opinion on it. Uh, first lot that I built on, actually the second, was ten thousand square feet. And as I recall on Christiansen's, there's commercial and some townhomes. Uh, twelve thousand, maybe some fifteens, and this is next door. I think it fits the area perfectly because we also need affordability. And it doesn't mean that you're, you're going to mess up the area with the smaller lot. They're not going to be able to build cheap homes there because there is no such thing anymore. Whatever goes on that lot's going to be five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollars. I think we need more affordable lots. You, you, you take the size of the lot now, someone can put maybe twenty or thirty thousand dollars more inside of their home. I think the R ten fits it like a glove.
I think you, I think you're right, Commissioner McCormick, but I think the, the issue that we need to see with this is like the others in the area that's been done to get that down zoning was a master development agreement tied to it. And this one's not proposing that. And that's where I have my concern. If it was a rezone with that master development agreement stating, you know, like the ones before. Yeah, but you're still getting more than double your density. I mean, that's it. You looked at, when we looked at J D R C Ranch, I mean, really it could have stayed. Well, I, I just would, yeah, I mean, I, I re- I think the one, one tens, ten thousand would probably fit if it was in a master development agreement that spelled out street trees, parking, a lot of those things that we approved with J D R C.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah. And, and members of the, uh, board, uh, so condition number one in the staff report does mention entering into a development agreement. It doesn't have, um, all the details that you're mentioning. And so, yeah, uh, if that is the direction you'd like to go, um, you may want to table it until we get a little more detail for a potential development agreement. Um, that's one option. Another option is to, you can approve with, uh, changes if you're comfortable making changes. If the ten thousand square foot lot sizes don't bother you, but the size of the park does. Um, again, this is the time that you could set expectations and set the rules and say maybe two of those lots need to be absorbed into a park. Um, the trail, if you don't want to see a trail out on the street frontage, you'd like to see it on the rear of those lots. My recommendation would be to try and make it comply as much as you can with, um, what's in J D C. J D C has twenty foot wide, um, landscape trail corridors. Um, if you do a twenty foot wide landscape trail, trail corridor on the west side of this, that is going to, uh, affect their lot sizes unless you allow it as a, as an easement instead of as a, as a fee title. Uh, so there, there are some different options here that you can take. Um, and also, uh, I think the applicant thought that during public comment, they were looking for, you guys were looking for other public comments. Um, applicant would like to address the.
We didn't know we had an applicant here, so that makes it a lot better.
We can do that. Um, sure. So do we need, do we need to open the public meeting again for this? Okay. All right. Yeah. Please, uh, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Brad Brown, uh, seven nineteen west forty three fifty south in Riverdale. Yeah, I don't want to interrupt your discussion, but I'm, I'm happy to address any specific items. But.
Yeah. Commissioners, any, any questions or comments for, um, the applicant?
Maybe the first one, I mean, just like we've discussed that trip. Unmatching the neighboring subdivisions and for two, you know, not putting it in the front of the lots. I mean, is that something you're, would be willing to look at?
Yeah, we'd be willing to look at it. We actually, um, you know, and Commissioner called to your point that, you know, talking through some of these, we, we've had several iterations of this, um, you know, come together with, with Charlie and Rick and, and Steve and, and change this around. The, the trail in the front was kind of what we ended on on our last one. And at, at that point, no one had objections. So we're, we're open to looking at it. You know, and the, we went to work session, talked with the, the county commissioners and a small part was something that, uh, Commissioner Ford had, you know, kind of said he would like to see. And, you know, the, there, his thought, and I think what, you know, we're going for is, is not necessarily a separate new subdivision master planned. More of a continuation of what Milton Holmes doing and, and, you know, hi- his comment was, he wants the same look and feel and, you know, everything of that. And, and so we, you know, close enough, it's the same neighborhood. Their large amenities are going to be public. You know, I, you know, we don't have the size of the, both in space or, or project to make large amenities. Um, but Commissioner Ford felt like, you know, a little pocket park or, or something. He wanted us to have the trees kind of match what, what, you know, J D C's doing and, you know, ma- maintain that, that same feel. And, you know, kind of backing up the, the reason for this and for, you know, couldn't just go with a zoning as it is is, I mean, there's no sewer to this side. We have to go along with sewer and, you know, some of these other limitations. They're expensive and, and front end heavy and, and so. But we, we love what, you know, Brian is a good friend of mine and I, I love the plan they have and what they're doing and this, you know, we talk often and, and are coordinating and, and we feel like this is a, you know, I, I think they got a, a big deal and, and, you know, both land basis. And this land didn't make sense for them and they've looked at it, but we feel like we can continue that and make it so that it's not like an island left. I mean, yeah, and so. Any, any questions, anything?
Thank you. Yeah. Anything else?
Would you be opposed, you know, if, if some of these, if we, you know, come to a consensus on a few items that we wanted to see in the development agreement and, and, uh, recommended approval based on those things being placed in that development agreement? Would you be opposed to that?
No, I, I mean, our, our preference would be to have a positive recommendation so we can continue forward and, and, you know, we, we want to make this a good community. Uh, we want this to be a, a net positive for residents and, you know, want to do anything that wouldn't be, you know. So what, I, I like hearing your vision and what's important to you. Um, you know, we can't match that up with what the market's showing and, and what we can pull off.
I mean, just some of the things that I would, you know, that, as I look at this, that I would recommend into that development agreement. I mean, you're already showing street trees. But that's something just to ensure that the street trees meet what the county code is. Let's just list the street trees along with the, what the, what our county, the inspector code showed for street trees in that agreement. You know, the, the park space, you know, it's, when you look at the total area and, you know, you bring up a good point, what J D C's bringing as far as parks and open space to their number of lots to here. I think Commissioner McCormick and Andrea brought up that point. I mean, it's probably, you know, sized equivalently, but let that development agreement now state how that's going to be maintained, you know, what's going to be in that park and, and who's going to maintain that park is something that I'd recommend seeing. Um, you know, I defer maybe to Acting Chair, you, or Acting Director Ewart. Sorry, I don't, it's not a real title, but I like.
Call me Charlie.
But I mean, as.
Acting director is my dad's name.
Mr. Acting Director. Okay.
What, if we did that, I mean, what's, has the county done something like that and allowed that twenty foot easement? And how would that reflect on the, those lots there so that we could still, I mean, I, I see where you're coming from. I would rather approve a twenty foot easement at the back of the lots to do a, a landscape trail versus, you know, a, an asphalt ten foot wide path in front of, you know, those lots.
Yeah. So, uh, there are options. Um, have we ever done a twenty foot wide pathway easement? I don't think so. Um, there, there may be some circumstances where we've done like a future right of way easement to preserve the land. Um, it would essentially be a covenant that would run with land. I think the easement in this case, because it is a, a pathway. Um, I, I think it can be shown on the plat and, and, uh, describe exactly what that's for. Um, another document will need to be recorded with each of these lots that say this is what the easement is and this is what it's for. Um, it'll need to explain what the owner's responsibility is for what's in that easement, uh, not just pay taxes, which they will be paying taxes on a public trail if that's, uh, how it's laid out. Uh, you know, there may be another option for the applicant to, um, widen some of those lots and, and, uh, make them more shallow. Uh, so it's not an actual easement. It's a, it's a dedicated piece of land. Um, so there's different opportunities. It'd just be a matter of putting pen to paper and seeing how it works.
I appreciate the, that there. I, I would rather see a dedicated, you know, it's its own titled piece of ground. I think that it's just better for everybody, but I just was curious on if we've done it and what's. Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, uh, as far as a lot size goes here, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, the, our general plan that we're working on, I won't be a bit surprised if we won't see small lots in western Weaver County. Couple of items with that. Number one is, is to make a lot cheaper. But also the people that buy homes nowadays, they really don't even want to cut their loans. And so I'm thinking that, you know, thi- this here has a positive strike in, in my mind. Uh, the only problem I do see is, is this engineering, the, the, the trails and lot amenities we have here that blends in with the ones around there. But I don't see that to be contingent on lot size at all. Uh, subdivision like this, uh, I mean, I'm seventy seven years old. I could live in a single level house there and be just fine. And not have to worry about cutting weeds every day. So I, you know, I, I, I think that there's a real need for something like this in all of our communities out there. Not, not everybody's going to be able to afford the seven hundred thousand dollar house or more. You know, I've got three kids. I've said this before. I can give them each an acre and they still will not build a home because of the cost. Because we're conservative peoples. Now, uh, I, I just think that we need more of this. And the only thing that I would say is they need to be engineered so they're easily taken care of, which smaller lot should go a long ways with that. But at the same time, have a, a, a positive effect for community. One acre lots on fifty acres, there's no community. They might wave when they go by, but this here could generate community. Uh, the one thing that I would think is, is I would like a, uh, be a larger, uh, gathering area. Something that promotes community. Kids aren't playing in the field over here to the northwest, but it's big enough so they can have a little ball game or something. So. That, that's my two bits on that. As far as the trail goes, I, I, I'm not sure I'm crazy about having it in the back of the lot either. I, I guess I'd, I'd have to see what you could come up with to put my mind to these because we got a bunch of homes here and there will be traffic. But if we develop a sense of community, people will look for each other. They, they won't be ripping down that road. Uh, you know, maybe these roads need to be windy or something so people don't go too fast. Anyway, that, that's my two bits on it. I, I, I'd like the idea, but I'd like to see more of this in the county. I think that that's, uh, where we need to head. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else for Mr. Brown? Hate to keep you on your feet. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, yeah, with the trail, I, um, that was one thing that we talked about in another meeting and I, um, I want to make sure we get it right. I, I do also have some concerns with the backyard. You know, if everybody puts up fences, then, you know, is there, is there a danger there or so, so, and, and I don't know exactly what that is, but I, you know, I feel like, just so you know, we're willing to work on that. Um, I would hesitate to lock in something that might, you know, come back and be hard, but.
Well, I'm, I'm listening to everyone's comments and I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with, with all of them. The one thing that I see here is i- in the recommendation, and that is that this is entered into with a, with a development agreement regardless. So yeah, it can't be an unreasonable, you know, development agreement, but a development agreement nonetheless gives a certain amount of latitude and it's, it's a fairly wide amount of latitude. So I feel like this is kind of protected by the fact that the rezone is kind of protected by the fact that there has to be a, a, an agreement with a development agreement. As far as the, the density, yeah, the density is a concern. However, nearby, and, and I'm kind of thinking of this into the future, nearby, there's a park that Plain City has. And if at some point in time, and I don't think it's an if, I think it's a when Plain City actually decides that they are willing to annex this. I would be a little more bold there, but I'm going to, I'm going to mind my tongue. So when they, when they do, uh, annex this in, then, uh, you know, there's use of that park that, that Plain City doesn't have to feel like it's, it's a burden from the folks that are residents of Weaver County. Because that's going to happen regardless. You know, those folks are going to migrate over there and they're going to, you know, they're, they're going to use that park and you know what? To Commissioner Andrea's, um, comments. That's what creates community. And, and so, you know, the, the density doesn't bother me, uh, real bad because of the fact that it's already precedent that there, there's already um, small lots there and the affordability factor is, is also a concern that I have as well. So go back to the, my original, uh, comment, and that is with, with the, the agreement for a development agreement. I don't necessarily, um, think that this is bad. And as far as the trail goes, I'm hoping that there's an option that, you know, can be thought of and suggested that might be better than anything we're thinking of here tonight. I'm hoping that we'll be able to maybe think outside of the box a little bit on that. I agree with both sides of that argument. Um, as far as where, where it's positioned, what's best, what's not. Anyway. Um, thank you for your, your time and your, your patience with us. We appreciate that. And your, your willingness to accept our comments. Thank you.
Okay. I got one comment. I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Uh, please.
Comment after yours.
Okay. My con- just to comment is, is I, I, you know, I like the direction we're going with the development agreement. I feel that, you know, does the commission feel well enough that we can turn this to staff, that staff will do? I mean, I, I feel staff could do a great job. Instead of us sitting here listing all the conditions we want to see in that development agreement. Let's just let it be as it kind of rode in here and let staff negotiate. You know, they know what they want to see. They know what the neighbors probably, probably better than we do. So.
Man, you got what I was saying.
Well, that's where I'm, that's where I was going. So, okay, Commissioner Wick.
So I'm not completely convinced the R ten's the way to go. Um, I, I understand the point. I think affordability is the only, um, point that might be viable. Might be viable, but it seems that homes are going to cost what they cost and developers will get whatever the market. Asked for them, so I don't know that homeowners are going to be paying less because a developer pays less at this point where the market is. I guess that's my concern is that I don't know who's going to profit from um, from that. I wish there was a way that we knew that the homes would cost less, but I I feel like the market drives that. And building more homes is is important for keeping that cost down. Um. The um, the R ten that's in the adjoining property is very far away from the one we're talking about, the one we're talking about about R twelve and R fifteen. The R ten and the other property is next to the commercial properties and the townhomes. So it it's more of a blend and there is quite a large open space close to those townhomes and those R ten properties. Um. Can you pull that up?
Will you pull it up and show us where this subdivision is? You don't even have to come up, just just sit, be comfortable, okay?
But there is our tender.
But yeah, I I want to see where the R ten is in relationship with the subdivision that's already in Plain City.
Now, the one in Plain City is an HOA. It's not a rezone, it's it has open space next to it. Um, and the nature ways maintained differently than an R ten zoned area would be maintained. So that that is concerned as far as the trail goes, so I use the Ogden Park Trail often, I'm on that trail. And the worst parts of the trail is when you're in someone's front yard because I'm not using it to stroll around to see my neighbors, that's what the sidewalks are for. I am on my bike or I'm running and I I want to move, I don't want to stop every ten feet. So that's why even with the fences on either side to protect the property owners, I would prefer. I I feel like this is a more of a commuter and more of a recreation trail and not um. Like it's your neighbor house, like there will have sidewalks for that, so I like. Just seeing what's happened with the Ogden Trail, I think it is nice when it's just a an unencumbered trail with few stops. Um, because I assume this is connecting to. With the Ogden River Parkway. Yes. So well, and then is there any connection eventually to anywhere else?
Not yet, but there is some regional ideas there.
Creates the system that it can be used for commuting and if you're just stopping for everyone pulling out their driveway, it's not very functional. Um. And so an R twelve, there's an option for law averaging, so we can have some more affordable homes mixed in with some that are less affordable. And um, look at an R twelve zoning and um, law averaging because of connectivity or maybe there's something we can do there so that we still have some R tens, some R twelve, I like that mix, but I. I'm nervous about putting that many homes in without an HOA, without the open space. And the meeting we went to for Western Weaver. I mean, the consensus, everyone wants a third acre lot, that was, that seemed like the consensus that everyone wants and it's. I said street frontage, it's a it's a look and so going with what the residents seem to want. Um, I'd be nervous going to that R ten, that really is a different feel than the R twelve. So, not that it's an awful thing, I mean, R twelve, I think it can work, I know in um. Oh, what's community? I'm, Washington Terrace actually has some really cute areas where they've done detached garages, so they're behind the house and I think that's kind of the idea. Of some of the more denser housing um, in uh, daybreak. Uh, and sometimes you can access them from the front, but it's detached and in the back and that provides a longer driveway for parking, so you don't worry about the parking in front. And a better curb appeal where you're not just looking at an all garage house that are. Turns into, so for me, I like the aesthetics, I know functionally that might not be it, but um. Yeah, um, I like the twenty foot dedicated landscape trail. As well, so, oh, did we, did you pull up that property though?
Wake up, Stephen.
Blabbling on, whatever.
The the the. Well, no, let. Well, well, yeah, JDC, but I also want to see the the existing subdivision in.
So if you look here, that R ten is.
I know, and I want to go back.
Next to our commercial and it blends into mostly R twelve. As we get close to our development.
So the the applicant of JDC is working with the county commission. Because they own the subdivision to the north and it's right adjacent to this subdivision as well, which may or may not get the R one ten based on. Um, outcome of this meeting and the commission decision, the applicant is is working with them to get that changed to either R one ten or even more dense right on that that buffer. The point of having the R one twelve around was to try and be compatible with adjacent land uses. Um, and now it's kind of having the opposite effect, but yeah, so they'd like to just see that uh, be a little bit more flexible so that they could be. Uh, compatible with the existing subdivision that they're going in. R one ten. Yeah, well, just in that particular location, just so they they have a little bit of flexibility on where to put their density is is what they're hoping to get with the county commission.
Okay. I don't know.
Same number of homes?
Yep, same number of homes, no differences.
Okay, so a lot average, I I did.
Yep, yeah, so the if you get smaller lots in there, you're going to get bigger lots somewhere else.
Okay, so I guess that goes back to, I prefer to see a lot average, so you can get different levels of affordability and um, not get quite so congested.
I I just have one uh, comment, maybe suggestion for staff is. Um, where we talked about. Uh, changing zone. Uh, kind of keeping your humps in. Potentially, maybe we could say if you're doing a ten thousand square foot lot. And our normal amount of coverage for a house is three thousand square feet. Or uh, or if you're building within the the back sets. Um, maybe we could reduce the size of the lot. Homes that would be being sold, there would be. Less money, less lucrative, so if you wanted to do a rezone, you are doing affordable housing. You want to do a de- a planned development. We're helping you rather than bringing you.
You're you, you're reading my mind a little bit and tomorrow we'll have some good discussion about that. Sure. You make make a new.
I was just stating it because we've had a lot of really good discussions and I thought. This is something that I would like to explore in the future, so I wanted to state it now, not necessarily tied to the subdivision, but.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. I would like someone to s- wordsmith a uh, motion, please, I'll make it an easy wordsmith, the one. I think staff can handle the the fine details in that development agreement, so. I'm making a motion that we recommend the positive, we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission to approve. The proposed rezone of approximately nineteen point four seven acres from A one to R ten. While ZMA two zero two one dash one zero, this approval is based on the following conditions. Prior to the considerations by the county commission, the owner will enter with development agreement with the county and that development agreement, you know, I think staffs heard some of the concerns and stuff like that and like. Put on paper what, you know, that development agreement needs to state without us on listing. Um, the development agreement showing the agreed upon street and trail. Connectivity to the subdivision to the south and that subdivision to the. The development agreement should also include a statement that prohibits the property owners from protesting annexation into Plain City at any point in the future. This recommendation is based on the following findings, the proposal. Does not conflict with the West Central General Plan and the development is not detrimental to the overall health, safety and welfare of the community. The wordsmithed again, though, thank you.
May I ask a question of for clarification of Director?
Sure.
Are you able in the development agreement to require more open space if they've already got that R ten? Um, zoning, are you allowed to do that?
You're allowed to require whatever the applicant is willing to give. And so the app- that is mutually beneficial agreement, the applicant has to sign it in order to execute on that, but if you ask for. Not too much and the applicant can still make a pencil, normally they will sign those agreements, so yes, you can uh, put some new rules in there. The only, the only requirement in state statute of making new rules, whether it's through development agreement or ordinance, is that you have to legislate to the same legislative process. Post it for a public hearing, have a public hearing um, with the planning commission and then uh, do the same with the county commission, that's all.
The way that this motion was made, they can't go in front of the county commission to get it approved until the development agreement is in place. So.
So, but that is something within your purview and the doubt development agreement to require more open space.
Yeah, how many um, usually how this works is uh, development agreement is negotiated. Uh, prior, but it's it's not in place until it's a usually simultaneous action. Development agreements decided on and then right after the reason was decided on, usually the same, is that, are you comfortable with that?
All the rezone is allowed until the um, development.
Right, and we write the rezone ordinance to say that it's not effective until a development agreement is executed, we write the development agreement to say it's not effective until the uh, rezone ordinance is executed.
Thank you for clarifying, that helps me.
Chair Sabaro?
Yeah.
I think this was clear, I just want to make sure it is what I think is state, what the motion stated. So. So. The motion is to allow staff not only to include these two specific things that were listed in the finding, but also other considerations that staff. Feels are necessary based on what you as a planning commission have brought up tonight.
Legal, just put it in the legal terms, I'm good with this.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that was the motion, okay.
In my non-legal terms.
I second it.
Can I ask for clarification, if if that's the case?
Call me later.
It is the trail in the back or is it on the street? That's the only question I have, if you guys are comfortable with it being on the street.
I I think that's, I you've had both sides of the commissions felt one way or the other, I think whatever staff feels okay with, that they can make work with the. Okay, applicant, both you guys can come to a mutual resolution, I think, you know, because I think it's been kind of, you know, I I I see both points, I mean, you know. Do I necessarily want it the back because of the, you know, you got. Privacy fences, now you got this little corridor for apartment, where all the little hellions to run around back there and do what they want, no one to see, you know.
I'll be handing out uh, spray paint on the corner.
My my, but the same problem is those, if those little hellions are playing out in the front of the lot next to a busy road, you know, it it it's. It's kind of, I don't know the perfect solution and I don't want to find it, so that's what staff gets to fucking.
Hey, great.
Me, I feel it's all about options at this point.
I think, I think you have a general sense.
Yep.
What, you know, what's kind of expected.
Yeah, great, and we'll.
We won't hang out to dry if you do put it in one or the other.
Yeah, you'll just, you'll just never, you'll just never get that opportunity again. Alright, so we have a motion and uh.
I second it.
Okay, have a motion in a second, okay, Commissioner Call.
I.
Commissioner Andriotti.
I.
Commissioner Edwards.
I.
Commissioner uh, McCormick. Commissioner Cluntz. Commissioner Wicker.
I.
Chair votes aye. Item passes unanimously, thank you very much, a lot of good discussion there. Okay, next item. Is comments. From the public for items not on the agenda, so anybody have anything to say? Okay. That item's closed, remarks from Acting Director. Charles Buwer.
I've been uh, focusing on you guys the whole time, I didn't realize that Real Director is in the room and I probably should have yielded to him.
That's, that's why we said acting.
So I'm going to remind you of uh, the meeting tomorrow, um, and we will have a lot of really great discussions. Brennan was on the call earlier today with the county commission, seems like the county commission uh, is is kind of on board with uh, some of the direction we're going in for the general plan. We'll have a a really good discussion tomorrow about um, the land use section of the general plan and the community character section of the general plan. And if we have time, we might dive into a little bit of discussion about parks and rec and transportation. So that's tomorrow's meeting and then in future work sessions, we'll work on uh, the other four sections, which is uh, uh, public utilities, county resource management. Um, and the other two, whatever they have.
Hope you remembered all of that because I went out of order, so counsel, is it okay if we back up and and go to item six? Does Charlie have to give his remarks again if I do?
I'll do it again if I need to.
Okay, it's fine to back up.
All right.
Okay, all right, anything else? Uh, from staff?
Oh, sorry, uh, just a reminder that you've got uh, planning commission dinner on Thursday. Um, and you know, it's Rick. I could yield my time, I yield my time to uh, Real Director.
You know, you know, you know, I think Rick's really kind of liking this, actually. All right. Very good, all right, okay, so I'm going to back up to item number six, planning commissioners.
Of course. I have a couple of items, uh, the first item is, and I I guess if it's a. Something we don't talk about, it's okay, but I'm just curious about the uh. Taylor's landing decisions. Is something that you're willing to share, we're gonna have to read it in the paper.
That depends on which questions you're asking.
Well, I'm just curious as to uh. What, what, what was given up to, I mean, what, what was the 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 decision, I heard that. Part of it was is some of that property goes to the parks. So if you just want to maybe give us a couple of seconds on that.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a few acres, I I can't remember, is it seven acres, do you remember Chris or uh, Steve, sorry? Whatever your name is. Hey, it's eight o'clock. Okay, I I want to say it's seven acres, I'm not, I'm not for certain, uh, goes for a park. And then the rest of it uh, will be uh, ag uh, as it was.
All right, then the second thing I have here is is there's been a lot of discussion about the uh, elephant out west there called the Great Salt Lake. And uh, I I'm happy to see that the uh, governor's thrown some money at that, but I hope it isn't, doesn't fall into the area I call BBS. The bees is is uh. You won't be reading. Yeah, right, it's a bureaucratic bull, so, a- anyway, it 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 got me looking into. I think we need new planning commissioner, you don't get that one. Anyway, I I got looking into to the lake and water usage and and these are in general terms and I kind of. Felt like it was better pretty good because some of it come right out of the state and some was on uh, KSF. So uh, eighty two percent of the water roughly in Utah is agriculture use, which I. Uh, I wasn't all that surprised at that. Uh, housing interior, four percent. Outdoor yard, six percent. And I guess that there's a, a uh. I I'm not going to call it a solution, but so that someone at State House says that that needs to be reduced by twenty five percent, so that'd be uh. Two point five percent of the ten percent that could go to the lake. And of course, that would be evaporated in about fourteen seconds in the summer. Uh, the there, there's eight percent goes to uh, commercial, industrial. And institutional uses, I'm not exactly sure what that is, maybe golf courses, I don't know. But there was an interesting thing on KSL that I read and it said that the. Uh, agriculture and food uh, represents uh, two percent of the economy and they use seventy five percent of water. Uh, being an old government employee, so whenever you look to discover where you're going to save things, you got to go to the big things. And there wasn't anything in there about that. Uh. And I'm just as nervous about that part as anybody else, we still have a small farm, we have. Ag presence in Weber County and I'm proud that it's there. I don't visualize that it's going to be there forever. So I guess uh, the, how I think this fits with the general plan. Is I think it fits better for smaller lots, I've said it once and I'm going to say it again. Smaller lots do two or three things, it cuts down the infrastructure. It it um, you use less resources. And I think that these things are very important with our elephant out west there because if it goes dry. Read what happened to the Earl C. Because there won't be any homes here, there won't be any agriculture here because once that surp- because once that surplus caused all of years of bad stuff going into that lake plus assault will be up here and then if there's a planning commission will be inside. Gee, maybe we should have done something different because it is a lot driven by how much storms and that we get. But if you look at the, ever since nineteen eighty-three, I've been looking at this flood stuff. About these things, all of the mountains up there and you can go see how much water's there, pretty much gives you an idea. And I, I look at those and then I look at what the NOAA long-range forecast is and it's more of the same, pretty much. So I think that it would behoove us to not crying wolf here, but keep in mind that water is a very valuable commodity to all of us. The people still in the business of farming, which I'm one of them. It, it, it's a lifeblood of ag here. So if there's something we can do in how we develop and do things to help save that, I, I think that that would be the right thing to do. I do know in the governor's plan, he wants to purchase water from some of the ag people that have some that's willing to sell. I think that, you know, everybody's going to have to chip in here. But it takes a lot of water to raise that thing out there a quarter of an inch. And so I, I'd just like us to be cognizant of that as, as we go through this because our general plan really in my mind is about the future. You know, right, right now, we think of one acre lot's good, twenty years from now. I don't think so. You won't see, I, I don't think you'll see quarter acre lots of where we set ag aside. We'll probably see four or five level apartment buildings out there because that will be the only place for it. So I think that, you know, we've got a good shot with this plan. What I seen on the staff put together and the contractors over West Weber, I was pretty happy with that. And generally speaking, I think that it was well received. And I had a fellow, I won't say who he is, Ron Gibson walked up and he says, he says, what's this with all these acre lots? Last guy I think could say that, and I says, why do you say that? And he says, it's like our kids that build live out here in these communities. And he's right. He's right, this is our community. So anyway, I, I hope that when we go through this, that, that we really are able to really grasp the things that's going to matter ten years from now. Because that's why we plan. That's what my whole life, my work life was, is planning for the future, executing those things. And so with that, I think we all have a big investment in this thing for ourselves. We have a lot of public out there that come here to live in the environment we have, which is great. But I don't see it really being able to stay that way. The pressure's on, you can't build houses fast enough. One reason they're so expensive, you've got more buyers than sellers. So I think that as we go through this, we just need to be really cognizant of that and also make them good enough to where people, I'll use the word sustainability, but want to move here, stay here and play here. Thinking that if we're able to do that, good road connectivity and a little something for everybody because the state's going to keep growing or make it complex out west sooner or later will fill up. And so I just want to put this out there tonight is let's think about ten years now, five and ten now, not today. Those spots on that thing was about today. That's the way we vote, it's the way I always vote. But we're going to have to look into the future. And with that, who's brought the food?
Don't think that we've formally proposed one yet, but there is one that's in the works, it just hasn't come. We're working on a general plan and so as soon as that's done, hopefully we can get some of this backlog of ordinances flowing again.
Anybody else?
I got one to kind of go on, you know. This general plans took a lot of time. Staff has done an amazing job, you know, every meeting, it's not just. Great, our staff has done. And, you know, I watched in commission meeting today, it really made me feel good that, you know, to see one of our planning staff be able to get the stall of fame, which is kind of like, I don't know, Rex Grover is it the employee of the month or something like that type award? And that went to, and you get a front row parking spot. But that went to one of our planning staff today and, and I thought that was just, you know, a great recognition and, you know, I'll throw Scott under the bus because, you know, Scott even said, Scott Perks got it, but when he come up and spoke it, he says this, I don't deserve this, our whole entire staff, I'm sure, to Director Grover, I'm sure if he could give it to everyone, you know, it would go across the board. But the, the, the amount of work that charged. Amazing, so.
Definitely team effort.
Yep. That's all.
Thank you and thank you staff. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, now, legal counsel.
My only comment is I have to work harder to get that stall of fame sometime.
Figure out how to do that, maybe I need to get Rick on my side, but no, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Chairman, before, before you adjourn, we will need to adjourn, but there's a work session that is scheduled. So hopefully we can get through that in the next few minutes.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Charlie, it's only eight, or seven o'clock, it's not eight, like you said. Check your watch. Yeah, excuse me, sorry, I guess we've got more time.
We're running way ahead of schedule tonight, Charlie. All right, so I will. Sure, I think we can. How much you want, ten, five, five, five minutes, ten minutes? Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break, but let's, let's go for adjournment, do I have? Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll make most of my adjourn regular session and having a
A break?
A break and then a work session.
Okay, very good, do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You're going to have to, yeah. Take what you want. Hey. Acting, actual Director Grover, are we ready to get started again? All right.
Yeah.
We good? All right, okay, we'll move on, I want to make sure that everybody's ready to go here, so, okay. I'll, we'll go on to our work session, item one and only item, which is Mr. Opolado, fifty-one hundred West, rezoned to C3, so. Go ahead.
I, I'm not, I'm not Mr. Opolado, but I just, as staff.
I was reading the script.
Sure, sure.
I haven't been, I haven't been here that long, you know, we've been here a while, but.
I just, I want to, I want to introduce this item and then let, let the planning commission, if you so choose, have a, have a conversation with the, with the owner. We've got Mr. Opolado, we've also got some representatives of CNL Solutions that are kind enough to stick with us throughout this meeting tonight. The, throughout this meeting tonight. If you remember. It would have been. Trying to remember if it was last month or, or the month before, there was, it was December, thank you. There was a rezone proposal on this property and I think you're probably all, you probably all remember it. Except possibly the new Commissioner Clance. There's a rezone, there was a rezone proposal. Along fifty-one hundred west and about nineteen hundred south. Of course. And that's this. In the proposal. Sorry, I don't know what's going on with this map. It's never done it.
Yeah, go ahead. It's not a problem.
I want staff access to this. I've tried, they won't give it to me.
That is interesting. Okay, wow, it must be after hours map. Yeah, that's interesting. Oh, well, you're familiar with the property enough. There was a proposal to rezone it from A. Two, I'm trying to remember if it's A one or A two, A two to M two. And the reason for that was we, in speaking with the owner and the potential future buyer, M two allowed for this company to be out there. Which, which would have needed outdoor storage of, of equipment and materials. It would have allowed for. A contractor, basically a contractor shop as well as some warehousing, which is what, and they will describe it further, but which is what. Which is the zone that's needed for this operation to work. In talking with the county commission at a recent work session before bringing the request to M two to them. There was a conversation had, Mr. Oplato was wondering, well, why not? C three, commercial three, potentially less impactful than an M zone, less intense uses than an M zone. C three allows for a contractor storage, a contractor shop. And it specifically says everything has to be within an enclosed building. And so Randy's thinking, well, maybe let's, let's just ask. The planning commission what they think of C three, commercial three, instead of manufacturing two. Now, if you, if you want during this work session, after having that conversation with the, the owners, we. We can pull up the land use table and look at the specific uses and the differences between them. As you can tell, they, it allows this type of business, both of these zones allow this type of business and probably very similar types of businesses. So. Ultimately, our recommendation, if this comes back before you for a public hearing for C three, our recommendation is still going to be. Let's wait until the general plan is adopted before we rezone this to anything other than agriculture, because the current general plan says it should remain agriculture. However, we wanted the applicant to be able to talk to you about that, so I will let them address you unless you have any questions for me.
Just one comment, I guess, to the commission. When this was discussed. The, the commission wanted me to bring back to you guys, I guess, they, they are in more support of seeing the C three, or at least the majority of them were. But that was pretty across the board with them is, is they won't hear this again until the general plan's done. They were too close to finalizing the general plan and Commissioner for Adamant at that point that. Let's get the general plan done and then move forward on something like this, so just wanted to pass that from that meeting.
Thank you.
Well, I think that, that makes really good sense, because when the general plans. Come out, in my mind, is, is we, we, we're gonna have residential, we're gonna have, we're gonna have. See, we're gonna have them, but you know, what's the relationship, say, is a commercial zone for residential? These are the things of my mind that need to be. In that plan, so we could make a judgment where they go. That makes sense.
I agree, I was, I mean, I was kind of put on the spot. So I'm not going to watch those meetings anymore, because I got put on the spot twice now, but no. They, they asked, you know, what, what I thought the planning commission would feel, and I, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but. You know, I, I give them what my thought was this, and you know, I know when we looked at it before. The M use has brought way too many things into place that, you know, missile manufacturing, stuff like that, to go right next to a residential area. And we had some discussion as the greenhouses, you know, that's an A two, I mean, it's an ag operation, but really, it's a commercial operation. You know, those greenhouses are, you know, looking at this from, from a, a commercial standpoint, I. I would support a lot more seeing a, a commercial use in there, you know, and with a few conditions, you know. Like to your point, I, we keep conditioning this stuff, but it's, it's a rezone, but I gotta try and take the. Both sides of it, you know, where we just approved a thirty something lots subdivision to the east, so we gotta kind of look at the. Protecting what we approved there, but we also, you know, Mr. Oplato has property rights and so. You know, I could see moving forward with a commercial zone with, you know, maybe some certain fencing along the residential to, to provide some sort of a buffer or something like that, but. I, I think. I think the, the commercial route's a lot better route than what we looked at before.
Thank you.
Can I have a minute?
Certainly.
So I had a facility and because it was at asphalt emulsion. We made seal coat. Because it's had asphalt in the name, right, or emulsion, people got very worried about what we were doing with that. Product that we were going to have a hot plan out there, that we were gonna. Create hardship for the rest of the, they were all M one and I needed to be industrial. And this was down at the fairgrounds in Hurricane. Right, so what we actually made was a hundred percent on the SDS sheets was a hundred percent biodegradable. It's the only green product that is out there for, that I'm aware of, for. Seal coat to put on streets, parking lots, et cetera, et cetera, but because of the stigma of the asphalt, we had to. Get in industrial. What Hurricane City allowed us to do was, we were able to have industrial zoning in this. Area that was all manufacturing. And we were able to have it based on our business license. Once our business license wasn't tied to this parcel, once we sold it to somebody else, the zoning change came back. To review, it, well, it defaulted back to what the rest of the. You know, other parcels around this was. So I'm very sensitive to what we're talking about here with contractors. We build the world. We build the world in your neighborhood. Sometimes when we're in your neighborhood, it's a little bit painful. But then we move on. We need a place to put our scaffolding, we need a place to put pipe, we need to put, right? And these yards aren't like the, what they used to be, it used to be a big hay field and then they throw everything in a pile. These are very well organized, because every project now is fast track. You have to get in and out of your yard quickly to be able to make money on, on job sites, so. If there's a piece of ground that we're talking about. Needing to be M so that we can have outdoor storage, I'm very familiar with these guys, they're my neighbor's kitty corner. They have a, they have as clean a yard as they possibly could, but they're bursting at the seams because their business is so successful. Right, if they were able to have a bigger place for, for themselves to go, they'd be able to put up racking, they'd be able to do these things, right? They'd be able to. And I don't think their yard's dirty, but. All of us contractors have to have a place to go. It's one of the only businesses that you can't really run out of your house. Right, like if you're a guy in a pickup truck, kind of a handyman, you can run it out of your house. A hairdresser gets to work out of her house, everybody else gets to work out of our house. We, our industry is based on the low bid. Low bid gets the job. But yet we are forced into the most expensive real estate. In very unideal conditions, you want to be, if possible, right next to the freeway entrance, because your job today is in Weaver County, your job tomorrow is in Provo. And it's important to be able to hit your yard, then go to your next location, so wherever people call, you know, like. Based on their business, that's my business model, their business model is they. You know, they, they sleeve sewer pipes with, what is it, H D P. U V cure. But it's a necessary business and we need to make homes for these businesses, we, if in our master plan. We can put, their business is very comparable to what we have with Questar. On Washington Boulevard. They have a beautiful facility out front and they need a place to put their trucks, their equipment and pipe in the back. We, we have, you know, we have Questar right there on Washington Boulevard, kind of our like. If not Twenty First Street, Washington Boulevard is, is where it's at, right? I think under our zoning, if we say that C is acceptable. Okay, then, then what is acceptable? Let's say fully fenced. Eight foot tall walls that nobody can see around, if, if what we. Like if scaffolding's un, un presentable to some homeowners, then, then let's put that in. That's in our new master code, let's make it, we can't have all of our contractors going way out west. Because if I'm working on your home, I don't know where anybody's home is here. And I need to go get a specialty tool. It's port to port, it's a half an hour there, half an hour back, and you just paid for it at ninety-five bucks an hour. So we, we need to have our contractors in strategic locations, which their business model is strategic, you know, like. Where they need to be, we can't group them all together, we need to have them around town. Think that's about all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Oplato, would you like to give us your thoughts, please? Give us your name and address first.
It's Randy Oplato, thirty-nine fifty-four west, fourteen hundred south, over there where you were gonna put that other subdivision earlier.
Thank you.
Anyway, a couple of things I just wanted to mention. You got, I think most of you know where this property is or have seen it. But. I'm in between the, the nursery and this new housing development. The, the nursery's on three sides of me, they're not going nowhere, they're, they're on a, they just started on their fourth generation. Handling the business and I think they just had their seventy-seventh year in business or something like that. So they're not going nowhere. And as far as the fence you mentioned for a buffer. This particular property is already got a military grade seven foot. Chain link barbed fence all the way around the whole property. And the potential buyers have agreed to slat it. For visibility. So. That being said, I've just been trying for several years to do something with this property and. One of the hurdles has been the sewer, because there was no sewer out there, but the sewer is now. Coming in with the, the development, so. Another, one more thing is, I think the, the C N L being a potential buyer. I believe there'd be a very good tax base to the. To the community and the county. And everybody pretty well knows you can't run a city off of taxes off of a home. If you got any questions. I would like to be able to have, you ask them some questions also. On, on their particular usage.
Okay.
So.
Commissioners? Like, have any questions for Mr. Oplato or?
I have one question. Commissioner Call brings up a good point of where he, he was able to connect license to a rezoning. Would, is that something you consider with this particular company, having, I mean, are you that committed? Said that, you know, it's connected to a business license, that would be an option for you?
I don't know what business license they're required, so.
It would just lock you into, the rezoning would be only for this company?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we actually had that discussion with the commissioner's work session. And this particular thing that we're discussing is. On certain requirements for this certain company.
Okay, that's.
Or company alike.
I think we're, we're Mr. Oplato, where they went with that is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director Grover. This use in C three is permitted, but what the commissioners were talking about doing was. As part of the rezone, making it a conditional use, wasn't that where they went with that?
Yeah, and they were also talking about certain restrictions with the development agreement associated.
So I think that would kind of, where you were headed with that, it would, you know, they put the rezone based on the conditional use permit. It only worked based, that company, it would change, yeah. Yep.
Commissioners? Any other questions? Would you like, do you have any questions for the potential buyers, so that you can, yeah, or, or do you guys have?
Yeah.
We're all family here, it's okay. That's only because you can't pick your family.
BJ Riggins, forty-one seventy-eight west, fifty-nine fifty south, Roy. And can I connect this? Not that's fine. Yeah, I got paper.
One thing too, that, you know, I would go drive past, like Commissioner Call, drive past her yard over there on the seventeenth, I mean, it. They, it's not just a, you know, these guys have a nice facility over there. So. Yep, it's something like, I think they planned to do out there, but yeah, there, that was something that was talked about.
You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that they're, like, take for example, standard plumbing. You wouldn't know they're not standard plumbing, except where they might have a track hoe in the. Right, so it's a combination of a few different type of business entities is what these guys are doing.
So what, this is just a very remedial site plan, obviously, we can change building location or anything like that. I guess some of the main questions that I have for you guys. You can see, we're looking at eighteen, twenty thousand square foot warehouse, a large yard space. And a three to four thousand square foot office front, which will be frigid border. With a nice front to it, properly sign out front. But I guess some of the questions I had for you guys after meeting with Steve and everything is. Based on the C three zoning, it does not allow outdoor storage. It has to be inside, so that. The outdoor storage that we have, we have some H D B pipe to use to bypass that is in. Someone racks right now, say, we got for it, and like you said, we would be building, open racks if you go directly on the. Semi trailer, they go onto the job site, get loaded back on, come back. That all can be put at the back corner of the property where it's out of sight, out of mind. And I know it's saying indoor facilities or equipment stuff has to be indoors, other than like pickup trucks. Which obviously we have tractor trailers, excavators. Gets here, something like that, we don't have a lot of it, but we are growing, so we'll be acquiring more. So something like that would be indoor storage with something like a pole barn, like a three sided. Pole barn would be something, would be an option that we face the opening through the west, where you can't sleep into it from the neighborhood. The community that's going in there. I'm just curious if these are things that we need to know before, before this purchase. Another question is, I know Commissioner Favero was saying that he wants to wait until the rezone is done. You guys know when that would be, because if, if that's the case, we are under contract with Mr. Oplato right now. If it's not gonna happen for three months, obviously.
April twelfth. Right, they said April twelfth is when it's supposed to be adopted, that's when it's scheduled.
Okay, and it's something with the C three, would that be open to conditional use as far as outdoor storage and everything? That's something.
I have, I have a question for that for. For staff, if we had a Home Depot. In county property, like on, you know, in. Unincorporated Weaver County. How would we treat them? They store equipment outside that they rent, they store all of the lumber outside that they sell, they, how would we treat them?
So what we'd look at is the primary use of the operation, and then there's the ability to have ancillary uses associated with that. And so like with the Home Depot. associated with that. And so like with the Home Depot, um, they would be able to have possibly certain areas outside for that storage, but the primary use would be the indoor. Um, on this situation, we may have to look at admitting the text to allow for something like this in the C zone. And, you know, there may be certain requirements are placed upon that with maybe the type of financing, the type of landscaping. Um, you know, maybe a pole barn type element associated with it to buffer from residents or, or certain things like that. We can look at those type of things as far as the ordinance goes to make that use compatible. And so your charge as the planning commission, you'd be looking at what type of restrictions should be placed upon this type of use? If you feel that it could be appropriate or should be appropriate to make it compatible with the residents in that area. Um, and as you know, there was that subdivision that was approved right across the street to the east of here. And so, you know, how do we make those uses compatible with each other and still allowing for, um, the applicant to, you know, get what he wants as well? So, and that's something that, um, we probably should look at, and we actually have this identified on the general plan map in one of our scenarios as, um, commercial for you to consider. Um, and as we do that in the general plan, there's going to be, um, policies and action plans that are associated with the general plan. And so some of those things could be, you know, how do we get that to transition into this down the road? And then, um, if we look at the ordinance and we go to the general plan, and if that supports it, then that's all the better because that gives you the findings to approve that in your motions.
Thank you. It's my nation. Appreciate it, man. I like, you know, I mean, given, given this, you know, looking at this picture, I'm giving these greenhouses behind it. Yeah. I mean, to Commissioner Edwards' comments earlier, you know, that's a commercial operation under an ag tag, so to speak, right? Commissioner Andriotti?
Yeah.
Um, and, but, you know, but it's a, it's a nice clean operation and I, I don't necessarily have a problem with a clean operation in front of that. I go back to a little bit of concern about the road, not, not, so please don't take this suggestively at all. Fifty one hundred West at some point in time is going to be a larger facility. So if that happens, it just lends more toward the probability of this commercial, this property being commercially zoned because of the width of that road. So it just kinda makes it more, you know, uh, it, it just kinda makes it more applicable, so to speak. But, um, yeah, right across here, right here in front of this property. And, uh, and oh, it's going to go all the way through. Correct, Director Grover? I think that that's on the, the transportation plan. It, it's probably going to be a larger facility than, than what is noted on the transportation plan. So, so to me, if that's gonna be a hundred foot facility at some point in time, and we already have a commercial operation behind this piece property. And however, you know, you know, to, to take care of the residents' concerns and the community's concerns, if, you know, if, if to the comments that, uh, Director Grover gave us and, and to the comments from, from the folks here tonight, um, talking to us about it, I mean, some, some nice buildings that are usable for you, um, but are aesthetically pleasing to the rest of the community. I think, I think that's, those are great, you know, compromises, so to speak. And, um, and I think it helps it tremendously to fit into the area. Um, I think the concern is, is, you know, the, the, the mind concept of a ratty old construction yard, you know? I think that's what is hard for, for some people to get past. But I also, you know, uh, to Commissioner Call's comments about, you know, Quest Star Dominion, whatever they're called down here, that's always been a nice, you know, a nice facility out in, out on, uh, twenty five fifty south where, um, Century Link is. That, that was a nice facility out there, you know? And they store all kinds of stuff there as well. So it's, it's certainly a doable thing. Um, those are kind of my thoughts on it. Um,
So I guess just to build on what you said, so if you put the road through there, the road would be the buffer, right?
Mm-hmm.
Let the road buffer and, and per se, you know, not because this applicant needs a burden, because there's really not a lot of benefit from this applicant extending that road through there. But at the time that, you know, the road could set that area aside for future use, let that be these guys' buffer. I mean, to me, parking a trackhoe and a, and, and I think we've had this discussion before, but what's the difference in parking a trackhoe and something else outside and you go up the road to Giorgio's Dairy and they've got the same type of equipment, maybe a few more of them's ag tractors and they're sitting out there. You know, it's the same thing. I don't have a problem. You know, I think by code, I think we would have to do some, some updates to the code, but you know, the, to park a, a dump truck or whatever outside, you know? Some stuff, yeah, it would be nice to be covered, you know, and that's for you guys' sake, just as much as, you know, an aesthetic, but I think maybe we could have a win-win if, if the property owner's willing to give us road dedication. I say through there as a buffer, as a concession to, you know, I think that's, cause I agree. That, that road's gonna go through there, but say in thirty years or twenty years when that road goes through and these guys have their building, their business, how much is that gonna cost us to buy that property? To then put the road through? So I think we could get a win-win from both you guys and, and the county. County gets the dedication. You guys get the buffer. You can still do what you want on that side of the road. And, you know, then it's, like you said, it's like.
I have a question on that road. Where Utah, you can't hold a sliver anymore on the neighbor. Right? Like you can't strip piece. What do they call it?
They're ho- holding strip.
Yeah, holding strip and, uh, it looks like this parcel has to give up pretty much like, how does the county address something like that? Do they make these guys pay for the whole road?
So the developer who's putting in the subdivision, um, they're putting in, I think, half of the road on their side. And so these guys, I think.
Yeah, sorry, this is weird. I'm not facing you, but I'm, it's the only available mic. Um, that developer's not putting in that, that, this portion of the road. It would be entirely up to this owner to do that.
Oh, that's right. They, we tried to get them to, um, do something, but that didn't happen in the end.
I think the way it lays out, the property wasn't on the neighboring subdivision.
It all ended up on Randy's.
Ended up in that corridor.
So, so, but my question is, uh, it would be what the property to the east, at some point, the property to the east benefit. So are these guys would, hypothetical here, would they have to pay for that whole road and then everybody benefits from it when in reality they have the frontage? Right, right? They have the frontage here.
So.
But that's already.
Sorry.
Okay.
It goes straight.
It's.
So I, I got one more question though.
Well, the greenhouse has a section too, but it's a direct line all the way across.
I, I.
Well, and I understand that. I under, it's all on your property right now, but eventually fifty one hundred is gonna go straight through at some point in time.
Correct.
And that's what we're talking about.
Tried to negotiate that out with the developer. And they decided to go around at the.
So, so really quick though, Rick, um, why would they need to put that road through now? Why would they give the county the easement so that in the future the road could go through?
It, it po- it possibly could be done that way. Um, it depends on the proportionate impact that it's gonna have on the actual development that they're proposing. So we didn't look at that as part of the site plan.
And then this is my education question is I've seen a lot of these developments where someone puts an access and then they're required in the road where not necessarily this portion, this road, let's just say, and I could be in, have enough information. So, but if that road really doesn't benefit this parcel because they have frontage, the road benefited, let's just say this parcel, or whatever parcel more. Those parcels would need to.
As you said, there is. Not until.
Participate in something.
Could be done with a deferral agreement depending on the impact that this may have. Um, but.
Oh, this is not frontage?
Oh, that's not a road.
The, there won't be frontage until there's a road there.
Okay, so it's the, the visual aid. I thought the, the white was a concrete.
No, the white.
Okay. So they're required to bring that road to the end of their parcel?
That's something that we'd look at as part of site plan approval.
But I, I mean, I agree with you. I, that's a lot of it's burden to put on that one piece.
Right.
All of a parcel. Maybe, you know, in trade store because there's, there's nothing to eat, property for a future road. So. That we could.
And there's instances where we've looked at just them dedicating it, but then entering into a deferral agreement that at a later date that that's put in place. There's a lot of different ways we can handle it.
Okay.
Also, just so you're aware too, um, the project on Washington Boulevard, um, there was certain things that went into place with Quest Star, um, that was required from city approval. Um, they looked at the impact we'd have on the residents in the back of there and they were required a masonry fence back there. They were required to put wrought iron fence along Washington Boulevard and do certain things to that yard. Or is why I know is because I was in charge of that project. And so.
But. It was, my point with that one is it was done right. It's beautiful from every angle, right? You can't really look into, so if that was the requirement.
It, it was, but I can tell you the developer was not happy, um, with that because we were trying to balance the community's needs along with the corridor along Washington Boulevard, but still trying to get that use in that area because it's an important use for a community. But it can be done. Well, anything else?
Any other questions or do you have any other comments?
I do have a few more questions. Um, so in the C three zoning, it requires twenty percent of the land and landscape and to touch on, um, Commissioner Andriotti's comment earlier on water conservancy. That's a lot. Okay. And not only that, now we're looking at the five acre parcel that I'm purchasing and basically take away an acre. Now I've got a landscape twenty percent, so down to three and quarter acres. Started right now. So is that something, is it twenty percent of what's visible from the, from the frontage? Or is it twenty percent?
Or is that something? That's, it's twenty percent of the total acreage and, and I, I have your same concern. I think that's a ton of landscaping on a lot of these parcels. But, you know, you also, when, when it comes to that point and it's going through the reviews, you're gonna have to, I mean, most of this area is gonna be hard surface. So now you've gotta come up with eighty percent of onsite retention for all your stormwater as well. I mean, some of that can be done underground, but some of that also could weigh in your landscaping needs and, and in some of those areas. So, I mean, it's a balancing act, but yeah, that's, that is one of the downfalls of the code. But I, I agree that seems.
In our, in our new master plan, are we required to have like grass and that sort of, or are we doing zero scape for commercial?
Not zero scape, but zero escaping. Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely encourage those type of concepts and we encourage that right now. Um, when development comes in, we try to encourage that, especially up in Ogden Valley. We do that, but, um, we're trying to encourage that more out west as well. So that's a very important tool that, um, you know, to get back to Commissioner Andriotti's comment about the Great Salt Lake, you know? Even though the landscape is a small proportion, that still makes a difference. And wherever we can do to help accommodate that, that's something we're gonna encourage. We already have, as Charlie's been writing it, we have concepts in the plan right now that, um, talk about water management and take advantage of those resources.
Great.
So I guess the, the answer is it has to be twenty percent.
Could change, uh, when we get into that. Um, but we'll look at that. And I think it's ten percent, isn't it, Steve?
Sorry. It's a, it is twenty percent, but keep in mind that it's not, not the entire twenty percent is gonna be grass.
And I think, I don't remember, it's been a while ago, we, we did those, we approved some storage sheds in the industrial park. And, and they had the same issue of the landscaping requirement and, you know, meeting that. And they come up with some creative ways to do it to the, the landscaping was a perimeter strip around it with some trees and, you know, some rocks. They got some, I think they did get some calculations because they used drought tolerant that brought it down. But something like that, you know, that helps a buffer requirement as well as meet that landscaping requirement. But yeah, to go in there and plant it all grass, I, you know, you're nuts. Johnny's got enough grass across the street.
Yeah, no, I wasn't worried about that. It's just taking up that much of the property. It's just that more usable space.
No, and I understand where you're going with that, but hopefully we could come to a happy medium between, you know, through that, a- and I think it goes back just like the process we did with the, that subdivision, that rezone for that subdivision, Plain City today, you know? Through that legislative bot, where this is a legislative process, you know, coming in for the rezone, that development agreement can hopefully cut back on a few things. Some concessions are given by the county concessions are given by the property owner. We can come with a good development like Commissioner Paul's talking about down here in Ogden, you know, that's gonna do the same thing out there that it's a win-win for the county and the surrounding areas. And it's a win-win for the property owner and for you as the, you know, who's gonna be the potential next property owner essentially, so.
Yeah, yeah. Believe it or not, that, that two and two hour and something minute session that you guys sat through and would rather not, that was actually kind of a precursor to this. I mean, it, it's kind of the same thing. And it's gotta go through the same process, uh, to change the zoning there. So with that, the development agreement, you know, that can be negotiated. And, and sense can be made out of it, hopefully. And, and it, and to Commissioner Edwards' comment, it's a win-win for everybody. You know, you end up with what you want. Community ends up with something that, that they're proud of, proud to have in their community. Everybody's happy. And that's really essentially the same thing we're, we're looking at here on a rezone. It's that same process, maybe just a little bit smaller area, but kind of the same thing. And anything with a master agreement, you know, yeah, it's, it's gotta be reasonable, you know? I mean, if you, you know, i- if you can knock down the landscaping so that it suits you to be ten percent and that seems reasonable to the county, hey, you know, and you, you bring some sort of a plan, even if it's, you know, not fully engineered or anything. Any, any visuals like that help to Commissioner Edwards', uh, point about the, the storage sheds out in the Weaver Industrial Park. Yeah, they, they didn't spend a whole lot of money putting their, putting their presentation together. What they had really made sense and it, it, it gave, it, it actually made the area look better. I mean, I don't know how many times you've been through that, that subdivision out there, that industrial park subdivision, but it's not that great. But adding those storage sheds would have made it potentially even worse, but they actually came up with some stuff that would add to the whole subdivision there, would ma- make it all look a little bit better. So I think that's, you know, we're kind of along the lines you gotta think about here. Um, don't think that everything's unreasonable and, and, you know, uh, think that, that there are things that can't be done. You gotta kinda push them out there and see, you know, see how they're received, just like what you're doing tonight. And I, I think, I think it has a lot of potential to be something really nice in the community there. So.
Yeah, I think too, uh, just to comment on that, uh, I think, uh, from Utah State, you can. I think uh, from Utah State, you can get a copy of what grows best out here because to me, I think native plants is where we want to go with some of this stuff because this was the desert to start with. Well, it depends on which kind. But but there's rabbit brush. There's all kinds of things that that you can trim up a couple of times and it works for you. So I I think that there's, you know, ways to really capitalize on minimizing water for that and still being able to, you know, have a an aesthetic place for when people look over there because, you know, if if you get this and you get there, we want you to be here forever. You know, and so uh, part of that is is, you know, if you have a well-run business and the the business looks well from the outside, I mean, that's a win-win.
Yes, I think it would serve the community well, but to Commissioner Paul's point again, it's it's not the construction company of yesterday. You're very fast-paced. If you're not organized and have your ducks in a row. So we have to keep it cleaned up and know where everything's at and be able to get it out of where we are as quickly as possible. And also on that note, right now, we're we have twenty-four employees out of this office and we have over twenty million. So we're bringing money back into the community, into the county.
Yeah, and we need commercial entities out. What's the, there's no doubt about that.
Uh, out in the county, you've kind of taken a a backseat like way back because people want the area to stay active. To the comments that Commissioner Andreaotti made earlier, that's, you know, that's not our future. And so to have a a nice, you know, well-groomed business in the community, it it it's helpful to the community, not just not just with the revenue it brings in, that's a bonus. But just having something like I said earlier, that everybody can drive by and say, oh, man, you know, that's a nice place. Those guys, those guys do a great job there. And that's the kind of thing that builds the community and it keeps people keeping their yards looking nice because they're looking across the street or over the fence at your place and saying, wow, that looks really nice. I can't let mine go down because I'm going to look worse than a construction company looks like, you know? And I'm not trying to belittle you by saying that. I'm just kind of making the point that it helps the whole community. It brings the whole community up, so to speak. So. Anyway.
And for the potential.
Yeah.
Session. I know you worry about losing land, but I think what would be really critical for making this work is that we have easement for the road to go through eventually. Would you be able to, I mean, uh, for storage purposes and until the road goes through, obviously you could do some land, but but I think we need to to save that section. Um, and I don't, I it's the significant slice. Yeah, it's a significant slice over there that we need to preserve for um, for for the road to go through and easement of some sort. How would that affect you? Is that a possibility or is that does that kind of change your perspective on the project?
It definitely changes the perspective on the park project a little bit. Um, as far as I'm concerned, right now, four acres would be feel like a hundred acres. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, right now. So it would be, but at the end of the day, I'm not the one signing the checks and loads. You know, the back of the owner needs to pay for five acres in the future.
Okay. Because I think that might be a deal breaker. Side because we really need to, um, I think we're negotiating part spot right here that's I I would be willing to say, let's make this commercial now and get this going if or if we have easement on that land there. This is the point where we need to, it's not after people have sold and built.
There there's always a pro and a con. The con to that road is the cost. The pro to that road, if looked at correctly, is frontage of this property and all commercial property is based on frontage. And so I know it's very painful that road is. I would look at it as as I use it today, I might have three, two parcels. Uh, if in the future, I would change it right now, I would probably have three parcels and my third parcel would be my yard until such time as the community forces me out of here. Because at some point, you might not want to be here anymore and it might be so valuable that you sell it off. So that frontage makes you money.
It is. It's it's, yeah. I, you know, you you yeah, you know, that's a good recommendation to the owner is that, yeah, right now that looks pretty bad. But when that road goes in, that makes it look really good. It's almost like somebody backed up there and dropped off a suitcase full of money.
Right.
Because it's going to do that to the value of that property.
Except it's the money out of our pocket.
I think.
And I would.
Maybe the.
Rick, would would they be required to pay for that or just give up the just give up the right of way? They'd be required. Yeah, we're not in the road business, the county isn't, but just like the sewer being brought there by the subdivision, Mr. Ropelotto is a beneficiary of that. So as development happens, certain people are beneficiaries of certain things and um, in this situation, the sewer was a benefit. Um, the road at a later date um, could be their benefit, but obviously it would be their cost as well.
Rick, would there be a way like, I know it's always tight with money running businesses, but there'd be a way that they could they could make this whole deal work. Two thirds of the road and then bond for the last third that they would put it in within another five years so that it's not all upfront cost all the time, just.
Yeah, there's there's a lot of different ways we can do that. Um, our engineering department doesn't like to do that. They'd probably recommend to do a deferral agreement. And then at a later date, have the, you know, when it they feel the time is right, that the whole thing is put in at the appropriate time. Most of the times when we don't have that road connection going all the way through or seeing that in the near future, they say, let's look at a deferral agreement. And then that way they're not on the hook for it at the present time, but they may be on the hook for it at a later date.
This is in the county where they have went in and and traded right of way for those because there this is going to be a c- a connection. So this would be prime time for other sorts of funding that that the county has available to make these connection points.
There there is, yeah.
Say, I I know of a subdivision right off the top of my hand that had that traded the the frontage that they needed and put the, you know, for the improvements with that.
Yeah, there there is instances where that happens, but for the most part, we try not to do that.
I mean, because the way the way I look at this today, not only with Mr. Oplato's piece, but the greenhouse piece, if the county don't come in and and put that connection in, it's never going to happen. You know, it it's going to be needed and it's going to be driven someday and it's going to come to the point that it's going to have to go in. But you know, that's where I feel if the applicant's willing to at least, I mean, that full width, so you're going to have to buy e- at least sixty-six feet times the length of that property, which is over, you know? Yeah. I mean, tha- that's a huge chunk of property and what that would cost us to purchase. You know, I I just, I I would hope the county would be willing to work with them to get just because they're gaining that right of way essentially through there to to not put that, because I I I wouldn't want to put that burden back on the property. Just because what, I mean, you are gaining frontage and I agree with that, but I I also agree with the point where you gain enough frontage to offset the costs of.
Well, you typically, when you're putting your road in, you hope to get both benefits on both.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I.
A- and to that point too, a lot of times it's on property lines. So like Mr. Oplato said, they tried to get the subdivision to split with it. Well, wasn't on the subdivision property really, it's all on his. So you know, it's just one of those one-offs that, you know, we need to look at this a little bit different, I feel.
Yeah, well, and that's something that we, when we were doing the subdivision, we tried to get the developer to work with Mr. Ropelotto to look at that, but that wasn't being, wasn't able to be negotiated. So right now, it's it's in a different situation.
That's what Jim.
That's correct. And so that's all I have to go off of is, and so your story may be different, Randy.
Concerning this road thing, I would like you to kind of table this for right now because there is issues currently going on between this addressment of the road and me and the county. And I'm hoping I'm going to try and get it addressed to uh, the county attorney and Rick by the end of the month. Uh, we've almost got it put together. So there's some issues. And I don't have absolutely no objections to the House in development. But Mr. Flint was not exactly honest with you guys at the commission about the road issue. So that's coming about. So as far as the road, I'd like to, maybe let's not argue about that until we see what's addressed this month with that. As far as the landscaping, couple of, you know, uh, I'm a commercial landscaper of forty-three years. Been in the same location, same address for forty-three years. I I have never, I was shocked the other day when Steve told me it was twenty percent because I have never, ever, ever worked on a project that's twenty percent ever in the forty-three years. Most of them are ten percent. The last five years, those have changed to five to seven percent because of the water. In November was my two-year required mandatory state schooling that we're required to go to every two years. In November, they made all the landscape companies go to a special three-hour class on water conservancy. Be like he was saying, using up too much water. They were basically telling, it's too late for me, but they were basically telling the landscapers, you best start looking into zero scape. Because the traditional landscaping is on its way out for commercial. And if you guys heard on the news the other night, the state is trying to put through the legislature as we speak of changing any commercial building, not have more than one percent of its of its landscaping to use water. So I need, I think the landscaping needs to be looked at big time. Because I I I was shocked when he told me it's twenty percent. I even maybe look, relook it up, just like Rick just did, because I thought it was ten percent. On your question about the the surface water drains, the draining system is already in this property. There is six drain boxes in the property and two drain boxes, one on the nursery side and one on the county's property that takes care of all the surface water on this property already. It's already underground. It actually goes under the nursery greenhouses to the south and out into this loop. It's already there. They might have to modify it with a few new boxes or whatever like that. But the underground concrete pipe structures are already in place. What's happening? Well, I'm just saying that the infrastructure for the pipe, it's already there.
Okay. Commissioner, is anything else? Yeah. Great.
Going to be a big part of this, I think, you know, for our decision on our end. So maybe, you know, get the road addressed.
But that will be done if I can. Well, the only thing that's going to hold me up is Rick and the county.
It's government. It'll take them two months just to get their side of stuff.
Anyway, they have to, we have to work out.
You got two bad guys right there. They're going to take forever to get it out.
So, but I've almost got what I need together because because this, this is not just a couple of months discussion. This is a twenty-six year discussion with the county about that.
I mean, maybe a recommendation is get the get the road resolved and then maybe if it's resolved by then, we can possibly start working towards this in our March meeting. No, but otherwise it would, it would hit that April meeting anyways. But we want to just keep things moving on your end as well as our.
That's why I want to try and get this this end of mine hopefully resolved by the end of March, at least where they have heard the full story behind this so they can get their input after that here, my side.
I think in March, we have a.
Jim's side.
We have a work session. So, you know, maybe just keep in touch with planning staff and they can maybe bring it to, you know, if you have an update, they can bring it to our work session meeting in March or, you know.
Well, Rick will be involved.
Perfect. I think that'll, that's a good.
Yep. All right. Very good. Well, that hopefully gave you something to, you know, be thinking about and moving toward some sort of resolution, one way or another, or decision on your part. But uh, yeah, you probably won't, you know, get anything until after the general plan in April for sure, from the from the commission itself for sure. And we can keep as Commissioner Edwards mentioned, we can keep pushing it along here with any new information that you can provide. Okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Now we have to talk for nine more minutes. We can't adjourn for nine minutes. Cammy's got to experience the full four-hour meeting. Hey, I got a couple.
Well, I I guess just going on this note then, then we've great information on changes we need to make to to allow different uses and and how to national use permits, whatever, but concentrate, but that won't be general plan. That's more in our code so that with, we could rezone with the general plan or not rezone, but make it easier for rezone because it would be along with the general plan.
General plan is just going to look at guiding principles um, and things like that. So, but this is really good feedback that we can incorporate into some of those principles in general.
Charlie likes bringing news tables, you know? This could just be one of those news tables.
Yeah.
Still might be a one-off case for where maybe it does get zone commercial, but we're still going to have to do a development agreement, something.
Yeah, we unfortunately right now, like you noticed, we have put a lot of things on hold because the general plan. And also up in the Ogden Valley, there's a lot of things we're putting on hold up there because we're working on Nordic Valley, Snow Basin Development Agreements and now Copper Mountains looking at their agreements. And so we're kind of a little thin right now, but we're trying to accommodate.
Tell the commission we need three more staff members.
Don't think that's happening.
Thanks, everybody. I think it was productive. I hope.